Good morning. Can you raise your hand if you can't hear me? Okay, terrific, everyone can hear me. Good morning. As of the last commission meeting, fortunately, no officers in California have lost their lives in the line of duty. However, please join me for a moment of silence honoring the officers who have lost their lives since the last meeting. Thank you. Ms. Nunez, would you please take roll call? Good morning. Commissioner Barcelona? Berg?
Here.
Brazil?
Here.
Uy?
Here.
Donilon?
Here.
Doyle?
Here.
Dudley?
Here.
Yule? Commissioner Yule? If done mute.
Sorry, here.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Adorno?
Here.
O'Rourke?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Tubbs?
Here.
Vasquez? Roll's been taken. Thank you. You know, seeing all of you just makes me miss you all the more. So it's great to see my friends who have been longtime commissioners. And now we have two new commissioners, and I'm very excited about. I had an opportunity to meet Mayor Tubbs on the way up here, and it was a pleasure. Mayor Tubbs, now Commissioner Tubbs, would you please tell us a little bit about yourself? And as you're doing that, just know, Commissioner Yule, that you're next. Michael?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and pleasure to meet all my fellow commissioners, albeit virtually. My name's Michael Tubbs. I have the great honor of being the mayor of the city of Stockton, California. I'm excited about joining Post, particularly at this moment in our nation's history, when we're reckoning with how do we reform policing so it reflects our country at its best? And how do we learn from the past to make sure we don't repeat those mistakes in the future? So I'm looking forward to learning and growing with you all. I'm looking forward to continuing to push to be the best Post Commissioner we can be. And I'm looking forward to California continuing to lead the way in terms of a society and a state that understands the dignity of all human lives and also understands that black lives matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Tubbs. Commissioner Yule?
Well, again, good morning, and Madam Chair, and to each of the commissioners. I too am honored to be a part of this body, especially, as the mayor said, at this time in our history, it's unprecedented, as we're saying, issues occur across the country. And I'm hoping that I can assist in helping to develop the standards, processes, and criteria so that California can truly lead the way and help to eliminate the many issues that we're seeing occurring right here in the present. So I look forward to the opportunity to contribute.
Thank you. And on behalf of our fellow commissioners, all my fellow commissioners, I want to welcome both of you and tell you how excited we are to have you join us in this remarkable job that we all have before us. Now, I'd like to introduce, to my right is Post Legal Counsel William Toby Darden. Good to see you. And to my left is the Post Commissioner Executive, excuse me, the Post Executive Director Manny Alvarez. And at this time, the executive director would like to address the commission. Executive Alvarez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to see all of you again, and thank you for taking the time to participate in today's meeting. So we have an agenda today that is crafted for very open-ended discussion by the commission. As you all recall, in June, this was one of the requests that the commission asked for, was to have some open-ended dialogue. So that is what this commission is about. We do have one voting item, and the rest is really open for discussion. Addition, I'd like to add that you will see there is no legislative report with this agenda. We usually have that, and we generally send out a legislative report to you, you know, on a monthly basis with the bills that are pending. Due to the timing of the publication of the agenda pursuant to the Bagley-Kene Act, it was two weeks ago that we released it. We were waiting till the last minute to see what was being pushed through the legislature. And unfortunately, most of the stuff happened last week after the agenda was published. So we don't have a presentation for you on legislative matters, but we're obviously happy to answer questions that pertain to pending legislation. So with all commission meetings, I always like to go backwards as to what we have done since the last commission meeting, the high points, and then what we anticipate doing between this commission meeting and the next commission meeting, which is in the third week of October. So in terms of where we have been, in terms of use of force and Senate Bill 230, as we mentioned at the last meeting, the training course for law enforcement on use of force is primarily done. That has to be done by the end of the year. It is ready to go. We are still finalizing the Train the Trainer course for the instructors. We, as you know, put out for bid to purchase virtual reality machines to utilize for this use of force training. That award was awarded in May. There were two protests to the bid, and it was finalized a couple of weeks ago. So there is a vendor now who has the bid, and we're waiting for the equipment. So we should be in a good spot. Once the equipment arrives, then we'll start deploying it. We believe we'll have 50, probably closer to 70, machines that we will deploy across the state with a standardized training curriculum on use of force for those machines. In terms of de-escalation, as you are all aware, we held a summit in October of last year, and we wanted to create some strategies and techniques. Those were published this week. So you will see the de-escalation strategies and techniques publication on our website. It will go out with a bulletin later this week to advise the field, but the publication of that document is already on our website. It's approximately 100 pages, and it includes an executive summary with the key takeaways on the de-escalation strategies. Also, with this current budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, Post was awarded $5 million to issue grants for distance learning. Those grants were to be distributed to California law enforcement agencies as well as academic institutions across the state. We published the RFP, the proposals, or the request for proposals, in the beginning of July. We had 30 applications that were returned a week ago. We awarded 20 of those applications. 10 were rejected and are now in the appeal process, so we should have more information for you at the October commission meeting. As we have discussed at the June meeting, those grants are issued for five different, in five areas, or they must hit in one of five areas. One is implicit bias. One is use of force and de-escalation. The third is cultural diversity and awareness. The fourth is community policing. And the fifth is wellness. Additionally, since the last meeting, we've issued a number of online training resources for California law enforcement, for both peace officers and dispatchers. As we mentioned at the June meeting, we issued two wellness videos at the very beginning of June. In July, we issued a two-hour online video training course on human trafficking. And in August, by the end of August, we anticipate issuing or releasing mental health responding to individuals in crisis. That'll be another two-hour online facilitated learning course. In September, we anticipate releasing three products. They're all, for the most part, internal types of training for law enforcement personnel on how to use EDI, our electronic data interchange, and of a training course for recruit training officers. It's an orientation program, an orientation training curriculum, and then a separate one for academy directors and coordinators. Again, an orientation training program that'll be released in September. In October, we anticipate releasing a Did You Know on Gun Violence Restraining Orders, as well as a self-paced course on gun violence restraining orders. If you recall, I believe it was the October commission meeting, perhaps it was the June commission meeting of last year, we had a number of community members come and speak during public comment about the need for gun violence restraining order training. So this course and the video will hopefully get us to where we would like to be. And then also in October, we anticipate releasing another two-hour video on the initial response to natural disasters. That is the online training which will be released. Additionally, we've been limping along, I guess is the best way to put it, for some of our classroom-based training. We have presented SLI, we have presented Command College, we have presented some of the detective courses under the ICI umbrella, the supervisory courses, the management courses. We recently had a training course for recruit training officers as well as scenario managers. We're able to do that by spreading people out as best we can and limiting the class size. Also, in July of this year, we finalized all of our internal budgets for the new budget. So every entity within Post has an operating budget as of approximately mid-July. Yesterday, we rolled out a major upgrade to the electronic data interchange. And we also were mandated by the state to redirect some of our staff to contact tracing. That happened in late May, early June. So we have six staff members that are full-time working for public health, not for us for the time being, on contact tracing. It's a five-to-six-month program for those individuals, so we welcome them back, hopefully in the fall. In terms of where we anticipate spending some time between now and October, I mentioned at the last, at the last meeting that we're required pursuant to Senate Bill 338 to develop senior and disability abuse guidelines and a model policy. We hope to get that started late this year, if not at the early next year. Also, in regards to Assembly Bill 332, we were mandated to collect testing data for the basic academy. We collected data for one year on gender, race, and failure rates across the board for firearms, academic testing, scenario testing, driving. We're required to publish a report to the legislature or report to the legislature by April 1st. So we are done with the collection of data. Now it's generating the report and conducting the analysis and generating the report. Also, we're required by Senate Bill 94 of last year, now Penal Code 13503.5, to report to the legislature on training that's conducted across the state. We're required to report the number of peace officers trained by law enforcement agency, by course, and by how the training was delivered. We have to provide descriptions of the training, including the duration of the training, skills addressed during the training, and so on. We are finalizing that report as we speak, and we hope to get it out in the next week or so. We have also had a number of conversations with the governor's office and the governor's task force on police reform. One of the issues that has been surfaced to us, which we anticipate coming our way, is crowd management. We've already planned out what we need to do in terms of crowd management guidelines, as well as the impacted training across Post that could be impacted by crowd management training. We have future online courses. I actually already mentioned the ones that we're anticipating producing, so I won't go over that again. We're also starting to conduct our five-year strategic plan. Admittedly, we're a little bit late in the year in starting it, but we hope to get that done very close to the end of the year. But we are starting the five-year strategic plan. The last one was published in 2016. We have two pending audits by the state personnel board and state fund. They're recurring audits, but they are extensive audits that we go through every two to three years. We have all the material compiled and ready to go. I think the deadline is this week. And that is it for what we anticipate doing for the, for the next few months. I also want to take the time to mention a couple of things that I think are of importance and of interest. So in Placer County, if you all saw some of the press over the week, there was a case from 2005 in Placer County where a young woman by the name of Christie Wilson disappeared, nowhere to be found. Ultimately, there was an individual that was charged. He was convicted for her murder in 2007 and is now currently serving time in prison for Christie's murder. Her remains were never found. This Monday, authorities in Placer County released, or held a press conference to announce that Christie's remains had been found on the individual's property or property the individual had some time ago in Auburn, California. I just want to take the time to mention two things in regards to that. I want to compliment the authorities at Placer County DA's office, both the investigators and the district attorney, as well as the sheriff's deputies in Placer County and other law enforcement agencies that may or may not have helped them put this case together. But I also want to mention that those two investigators participate in our instructors in the Post ICI homicide course. They've been longstanding instructors in that course, and they also work this case, so our compliments go to them. But most importantly, what I did want to mention is the victim's mother. Maybe some of you have seen her in the press, Ms. Debbie Boyd. She's been on this fight to try to find her daughter's remains for the last 15 years. She too is a speaker at the Post ICI homicide course. She's been a regular speaker for quite some time. For those of you that have been through the homicide course, you know that we do have guest speakers that come in, and primarily victim families. She has been doing that for an extended period of time. And we want to thank her for doing that, but we also want to show our empathy for her, for what she's probably going through right now. I mentioned this because I was told additionally that she was going to be watching the commission meeting today because of her involvement in Post ICI. So Ms. Boyd, if you're out there, you have our sympathies. We know that this is a positive step in having some closure, but we also know it's also now a difficult time. And then lastly, I do want to mention, we have one commissioner who is not present, who is retiring at the end of the month, and I just wanted to thank him, and that is Commissioner Walt Vasquez, the current chief of police for La Mesa, California, down in San Diego County. Chief Vasquez has been on the commission for three years. He was assistant chief before he became the chief of police in La Mesa, and assistant chief at San Diego PD, and he has 33 years of service. He has been a frequent sounding board for me, and hopefully I, for him, during his time on the commission, and I'm going to miss him, and I wish him well. And I just wanted to thank him for those 33 years of his time on the, supporting the state of California. Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Before we move on to public comment, I want to make a couple of comments about your comments. Manny, it's extraordinary to me how much great work you and your staff continue to do, especially during these very difficult, complex times. So on behalf of all the commissioners, thank you. I'm also so impressed, as I listen to the courses that are being offered, how incredibly relevant they are. Every single one of them were things that are happening right now in California. And I appreciate the Post is getting in front of those things. It hasn't always been that way, but I'm very proud to be a commissioner in an organization that is so relevant. I want to comment also that all of us will miss Chief Vasquez, and even in today's meeting, but in the future meetings. He had a lot to offer us as a commissioner. And then I want to make a comment about Debbie Boyd, the mother of the victim who died, and the guest lecturer in our post class. Debbie has been doing this post-class as a lecturer gifted for years, and the detectives bring her into the class, the detectives who have continued to work on this case for 15 years. At one point, one of the detectives casually said to her, "If we do ever find her remains, how do you want to be notified?" And she said, "I don't want to be notified by telephone." So these extraordinary detectives who continue to work on this case for 15 years, when they found her remains, got on an airplane, flew to Arizona where she is living, knocked at the door, and with all due respect, told her that they had found the remains of their daughter, of her daughter. The reason I mention this is, we don't get to hear often enough about the extraordinary work that our law enforcement officers are doing. And I think this was one of those times where they did great investigative work, and then they used their head and their heart to make sure that justice was served. And I found out all these stories because I had a conversation with Sacramento District Attorney Anne Marie Schubert, a most extraordinary woman. And last week, she did what no one ever thought was possible. A couple of years ago, through DNA, she was able to, with her staff, ultimately locate the defendant, bring him to trial, and now he pled guilty and is doing 13, I think, consecutive life sentences. None of this would have happened without District Attorney Anne Schubert. She led the charge to find him. She found him. She led the charge for the plea of guilty, and now we brought some comfort to those hundreds of victims throughout the state of California. So just in case DA Schubert is listening to us today, you have our respect, our admiration, and our love. And now it is time for public comment. Commissioners, if there's any interest in responding to any of the public comments, please take notes, and you'll be able to respond at the end of the public comment period. So this is the time set aside for members of the public to comment on items on the commission agenda. Pursuant to commission policy, the commission chair, myself, will manage the public comment period in deference to the commissioners' workload and meeting time restraints. Up to 15 minutes is allotted from the beginning of each commission meeting for public comments on items on the agenda. Based upon recent events, more people than usual may want to address the commission. Therefore, if required, we will go longer than the 15 minutes, but still may limit this period to no more than one hour, as we have many topics to cover on the agenda. Now, members of the public who wish to speak are asked to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes each. If by any chance we have many people who wish to speak on the same topic, I, as the commissioner, may intervene, and will ask you to limit your remarks to no more than one minute. Pursuant to existing commission policy, the chair may conclude the public comment period if multiple speakers are voicing repetitive or similar statements, and the 15-minute public comment has expired. Please be advised that the commissioner cannot take action on items not on the agenda. Please remember that this meeting is being transcribed, so I may politely interrupt you and ask you to repeat or speak slowly and clearly, so your comment can be correctly captured in the transcript. So if there's anyone watching who would like to address the commission during public comment, which is now, please call into the number shown on the screen at this time. We will take the calls on a first-come, first-served basis. If other persons are in the queue waiting to speak, you will be placed on hold until it is your time to address the commission. You will know when is your turn to speak when you hear that you are unmuted. Once again, you will know it is your turn to speak when you hear the queue unmuted. We will wait for approximately one minute to allow for individuals to call in. When it is your turn, if you wish, please state your name and your organization. And just in case, I'll give you that number. It's 571-317-3112. So now we will wait. I understand, when we first started the meeting, there were about 11 people in the queue. How many do we have there now? 15. Okay, so bear with us, and we'll get that all lined up. We're looking forward to hearing from all of you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, hi. I wasn't sure if it was my turn or not. I didn't want to be rude. Thank you for taking my call. My name is Emily Green, and I represent the La Mesa Activists for Good Governance. I was listening to the whole call before, and I just want to commend you for all of your efforts that you're doing. It sounds really exciting, all the training being offered. And here is my comment. Dear members of the Post Commission, we are a newly-formed group in La Mesa of residents and business owners who desire improvements and transparency in law enforcement practices in our community. We witness the recent incidents in La Mesa and know that there have been longstanding harmful interactions between residents and law enforcement. This is evidence of the need for real substantive changes in the conduct of law enforcement officers. We believe that increased effort should be placed on community-minded policing models, including training standards that emphasize de-escalation, understanding conscious and unconscious biases, community-appropriate dialogue and behavior, and restorative justice practices. We also feel that law enforcement officers would benefit from a training focused on de-stigmatizing mental health services in order to make mental health checkups routine and ordinary, as we know that law enforcement is a highly stressful job. We believe that training and minimum standards as required for ongoing certification can improve outcomes across the board in every aspect of policing and benefit the officers themselves. Finally, we request that every effort be made for the Post Commission to have additional people on its commission and advisory board who represent members of the community who are most affected by police interactions, including people who are differently abled and people with different ethnic and religious backgrounds. Thank you so much for your consideration of this comment.
Thank you so much for your thoughtful comments. Next call, please?
Hi, good morning. Can you hear us?
Sure can. Thank you.
Good morning. This is Morgan Geyer, Placer County District Attorney, and I have the great pleasure of sitting next to Debbie Boyd, Christie Wilson's mother, as well as District Attorney Investigators Don Murchison and Nuno Tavares. I wanted to first say thank you to Madam Chair and District Attorney Dudley for her wonderful comments, and to Director Alvarez and the rest of the commissioners. It is our great pleasure to be addressing this wonderful It is our great pleasure to be addressing this wonderful board this morning, and we greatly appreciate it. I have just a couple of quick comments about the case, and I would like Debbie to say a few words here as well, if you will indulge us. As you've got a history of the case, it really demonstrates some goodness that came from absolute anguish and a terrible situation. Kristi sadly was murdered by a man who kept her remains from the family for 15 years. And the detectives really did put their hearts, their minds, and their hard work into making sure that she was never forgotten and no one ever gave up. And even more remarkably is Debbie. She is the epitome of goodness coming from tragedy. She turned her anguish and her pain into action. She became an advocate, she helped educate, and one of the remarkable things in this case, as it relates to this commission, is not only did both investigators, have they been active instructors for Post, so did Debbie, so did the prosecutor on the case, now Judge Garan Horst, who was the trial prosecutor, was a longtime instructor. I am an instructor, the current DA. So this organization is well-represented in this case, and I think that's a testament to the good work that is being done by Post and the ICI program. Debbie has been remarkable in this endeavor, and I just want to make a quick comment on the circumstances under which she was told. When it came up in class, and you have to understand how absolutely remarkable it is for these students in these classes to hear from Debbie, it really brings it home and makes it real for them. Everyone knows the job, everyone knows the business, everyone knows that we deal with the darkest of hours in everyone's life, but to hear it from Debbie and to hear it in such an inspirational and positive way really does leave a lasting impression. And that call to action that she made from this terrible tragedy has been absolutely inspiring. So I would like to turn it over to her to make a few comments. I wanted to recognize her today, and thank you all for bringing it up. And Director Alvarez, I greatly appreciate your comments on the case, and I'll turn it over to Debbie here.
Morgan, first of all, Debbie, hang on one second. Morgan, thank you so much. As the District Attorney of Placer County, you've been doing a terrific job, and this is certainly a great moment for our state. And Debbie, I just wanted to let you know that I'd like you to take your time. There's three minutes per call, but you have your own three minutes, and if you want to go beyond that, that's fine, too. I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to say everything that's on your mind. You've been the epitome of strength during these 15 years. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this morning, and thank you all so very much. You know, I'm a firm believer that you go through a horrific experience, and something like we've gone through, and certainly there's so much learned that we shouldn't let all those learnings be wasted. So, when I was approached to join Don and Nuno in the class, the post class, and speak about my experience from a victim's perspective, it just, it actually created somewhat of a pathway to healing as well, because it feels like you're doing something positive. And the other is that, you know, it's just interesting, when I attend those classes, the questions that get asked, and there's real interest. And I think some of the biggest compliments that I've received in teaching those classes is when a detective would walk up to me and say, "Thank you for being so transparent. Because of the words that you shared today, it's inspired me to be a better investigator, to have more sensitivity, to think about all the things that you shared that went right and things that didn't." But what was really incredible to me was, in the last post class, which was in July, a Ronard Park investigator had asked me the question, "Debbie, if your daughter was to be found, how would you want to be notified?" And I looked over, was it Nuno Tavares? I thought, wow, yeah, how would I want to be notified? Nobody had ever asked me that question before. And it was in that July class that I said, "Please, don't call me on the phone." And eight weeks later, to have them show up at my door in Scottsdale, Arizona at almost midnight was the greatest act of compassion and respect that I could have ever asked for. And I don't think any of us would have really known how I felt, but that one Ronard Park investigator hadn't have asked that question. But again, there's just so much to learn from this case, and one of the other main points is relationships, how important it is for both sides to really foster a relationship, because these relationships extend longer than a year. These cases can go on and on and on, and in my case, 15 years. So, I think I'm at a point over the last three days that I'm a bit overwhelmed today, so please forgive me. I feel like my thoughts are kind of just all over the place. But it's just, we've received tremendous support. And from my perspective, and I've had a lot of other families that have reached out to me over the years, I truly believe, in all sincerity, that the work that Placer County Sheriff's Department and the DA Investigator's Office has done really should be viewed upon as the gold standard, because truly, everything that they have done, I really could not have asked for anymore in terms of respect, their commitment to communication, and also, I'll be honest, there were times when I wasn't pleasant to work with, you know, and there were many times where they absolutely granted me grace, and in spite of, you know, how I was feeling, still showed respect and didn't distance themselves from me, which, you know, we're all human, and I could see if maybe at certain points over the last 15 years where, you know, they'd see my members show up and not want to take my call. That never happened. And I sincerely appreciate that, and I think there's a tremendous amount to be learned from this team that supported my family. So, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, and you have no reason to apologize. You were nothing short of eloquent. Your words deeply touched all of us. We can't imagine your anguish over the last 15 years and how much you miss your daughter. Please accept our empathy and our sympathy. And we really hope you will continue to teach for Post. It's so important that our law enforcement officers throughout the state of California get to hear your words and how much your words will mean to them in their future endeavors. So, once again, Debbie, thank you so much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to allow us to speak, and as your instructors, thank you for allowing us to continue doing the good work that you have allowed us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Morgan, is there anyone else there that wants to speak?
I have two hardened, teary-eyed investigators that I don't think can summon any words right now. So on behalf of them, we will express our sincere thanks and appreciation.
Well, I'm in a room full of teary commissioners and people who work at Post, so we share your tears. Thank you so much, Morgan, and again, congratulations to the people of Placer.
Thank you very much.
I apologize, Bettine had a question. Bettine, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ramirez.
No, I didn't have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, you know, in regards to that case, I was a deputy on patrol, and we all were looking for her. And if any of you guys are familiar with Placer County, it's so rural, and I'd be out at midnight thinking, hey, I'm going to find this girl. So I just want to say how proud I am of Nuno and Murch for what they did for the Boyd family. They're amazing guys, and I can't think of two better detectives to work that case.
Thank you, Bettine. Thank you, Bettine.
Love you.
Please, go ahead.
I will just add a little bit of detail. When Kristi was located, it was getting late in the day, and we knew that Nuno and Don had to get on a plane to go see Debbie and inform her. And they didn't want to leave Kristi. They were very conflicted. They found her, they'd been looking for her for so long, and it was, you know, that moment of, "We don't want to leave her, but we know we got to go," that's the humanity, and that's the reasons why we all do this job. And it was just so remarkable. I literally had to say, "Leave, go get on the plane." And they said, "We know, we got to go." But they did not want to leave her. It was just a remarkable touching moment.
Thank you for adding that detail. Very powerful.
Powerful.
Morgan, is there anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now I'm ready for the next call. Is there someone there?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you. Caller? I can hear the caller who's on the line now. Please go ahead. It appears there is nobody else in the queue. If anyone would like to call, please go ahead and call, and we'll just wait a couple of minutes to make sure that you get to make your comments. I guess the other 13 people that were in the queue decided not to make comments. I hope it wasn't because of the long wait. We can hear a caller. Please go ahead. Is there a caller on the line? Apparently, there is a caller that we can, and we can hear some ruffling of documents or something. So if you could speak up, we'd like to hear your comment. Okay, there are seven callers on the line. They're all unmuted, and no one's speaking. So if you're on the line, just start to speak. You may just be listening, and that's fine, but we do want to hear from you if you have something to say.
Hello, can you hear me?
I sure can. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning. This is Paul Capitelli, former Executive Director of the Commission, and I heard some of the voices as you went around on your roll call, and I know there's some people there that I used to work closely with at some point in time. I just wanted to weigh in real quickly as you go through and have this very difficult discussion about the reforms for law enforcement. And I know that there's a lot of pressure right now that's coming from the community and from other groups to make significant changes. And admittedly, as a law enforcement professional with over 40 years of experience, I can tell you, certainly there are needs for improvement. I would just want to remind the commission and want to remind everybody else who's part of this process that the number-one concern as you move forward should be not only to protect the lives of the citizens, but to safeguard the officers themselves as they do their job. As having been involved in post-course development now for decades, I can tell you that a great deal of thought and a great deal of planning has gone into making sure that there are de-escalation components and elements that keep officers safe and at the same time get the job done to, say, disarm suspects and things like that. So, please keep this in mind. Please keep the officers safe, and while at the same time recognizing that there is a need for reform. So, I just wanted to make that statement, and I don't know if that will be of any value, but I wish you all luck. I know you have a difficult job ahead of you, and having sat around the table at various times through difficult issues, I know that I'm sure in the end you'll make the right decision. So thank you very much for taking my call, and good luck to all of you.
Thank you, Paul, and your words are always of value. I want to thank you for speaking today and for holding law enforcement officers, as well as our community, in your heart. I also want to thank you for your service to Post and for your continued engagement. Stay well, my friend. Are there any--
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there any other calls? If you can hear my voice and you're on the phone, just start to speak, and we'll recognize you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
This is my first time. I'm with the NAHTP Santa Monica Venice, and I was invited by Jethro Moore, and I found your topics very informative, because I'm meeting down here with LAPD in Santa Monica PD, so I appreciate the information you guys shared this morning. And my name is Daryl Gude. Hello?
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else on the phone? If there is, just speak up, and we'll recognize you. Okay, at this time, then, I will turn to the other commissioners and see if anybody would like to comment on any of the public comment that you've heard in the last 25 minutes.
Unmuted.
Who just said, "I'm muted"? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing any commissioners raise their hand about any comments on the public comment. Okay, then we will proceed. Just checking again, Tobias, there is nobody in the queue right now that would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to give this one last try, because public comment is so important to the commissioners. Is there anybody who can hear me who's on the line, public comment line, who would like to speak at this time? Thank you again. I will now proceed with the agenda. Our first item is the approval of the action summary and meeting minutes from the June 18th, 2020 commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
More.
Second?
Ramirez.
Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Nunez, please do a roll call vote.
Thank you. Barcelona?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brazil?
Yes.
Buie?
Yes.
Donilon?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Yule?
Abstain.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Madrano?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tubbs?
Abstain.
Vasquez. Motion's passed. Sorry, motion carries. At this time, we'll be jumping ahead in the agenda to vote on the one item that we need to vote on today. It is Item D in a report on Amendment to Regulations 1015 and Commission Procedure E-3-2: Maximum Reimbursement Rates. At this time, I would like to call upon AGPA Katie Strickland and Assistant Executive Director Maria Sandoval to provide us with information on this item. And after we finish this vote, we'll be taking a 10-minute break. Please, go ahead.
Thank you and good morning. This item is being brought back to the Commission one more time per the direction of the Office of Administrative Law. At the February 2020 meeting, the Commission approved an increase in agency reimbursement for the regular basic academy to 800 hours and improved increasing, and approved increasing the daily reimbursement rate to $75. After the meeting, upon further review of the content, Post staff realized that the reimbursable hours and weeks for the RBC modular format, modules 3, 2, and 1, were not included to update, were not included in the update to match the newly approved changes to the standard format. It was also noticed that the maximum reimbursable weeks under the RBC standard format should have been updated to the 20 weeks in order to equal a maximum of 800 reimbursable hours. Making both of these updates will ensure consistency between the RBC standard format and the modular format.
Are there any questions from any of the commissioners? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion, Donilon.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Questions, comments? All in favor? Apparently, we need a roll call. Okay, one moment. We roll call that? Okay. Yeah, okay. Please go ahead with the roll call. Okay? Barcelona?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brazil?
Yes.
Bowie?
Yes.
Donilon?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Yule?
Abstain.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Madrano?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tubbs?
Abstain.
Vasquez. Okay, that motion carries. Question?
Good morning. My name's Andrea Perry. I'm a Sacramento resident calling on behalf of myself.
Okay, we will now take a 10-minute break, or let's make it a six-minute break. You know me. So it's 10:24, let's go till 10:30. So I pulled up a number of different states just to give you examples of what some other states do. There's been a lot of press, obviously, and there's some bills moving forward in the legislature right now regarding the decertification of peace officers. As has been widely reported, and we've spoken before at this commission, or before this commission, there are approximately 45 states that decertify officers, and there's five, California being one that does not decertify officers. But decertification is very, very different amongst the different states, and I'll give you some examples. I looked at Nebraska. So Nebraska can suspend or decertify a peace officer for the following: for failure to meet the annual handgun qualification, for failure to obtain 20 hours of continuing education, for medical emotional incapacity. And an officer can be removed from suspension if they then obtain the requisite training hours. In Idaho, Idaho does not have suspension authority for misconduct. They have the authority to temporarily suspend an officer for failing to comply with in-service training requirements. I bring those two up because it's important to note that although they have decertification authority, it is not for what we may be reading in the press about misconduct or criminal convictions and such. In New Mexico, they do have authority to decertify an officer for criminal convictions. They also have the authority to decertify an officer for making false statements or giving false information to the academy in connection with an application for admission or certification. They have the ability to decertify for committing acts which indicate a lack of good moral character or constitute dishonesty or fraud and which may adversely affect the individual's ability to exercise the duties of a police officer. They can also decertify for committing acts of violence or brutality, which indicate that an officer has abused their authority. And in the state of Maine, Maine has broad authority and statute to sanction law enforcement officer certification. The range could be from a letter of guidance to full revocation for criminal convictions for conduct or actions listed that don't rise to the level of a crime but constitute gross deviations from standards. In Alaska, they have the authority to revoke certification and now, but they do not have the, the ability to provide an intermediate sanction such as temporarily suspending a certification or a license. That is now apparently going through the legal or the legislature in Alaska to consider that. In Arizona, Arizona takes a deeper dive and suspends officers for periods of time, 60 days, 90 days, whatever their time periods are, and they obvious, they also decertify officers. In the states of Oregon and Washington, the decertification occurs after a person has separated from a law enforcement agency, so they generally do not go into agencies to decertify officers. So it varies widely, and I bring up those various, you know, broads or ends of the spectrum. So when we hear that certain states decertify officers, it can be for not meeting training mandates, and in other states, it could be for criminal convictions and misconduct. So those are some recent, just some examples, West Coast examples as well, as well as across the rest of the country. Before I open it up for a discussion with all the commissioners, do you have any thoughts that you would like to offer us?
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, not a thought, but a question to the Executive Director. Who are the other four states that do not decertify under any circumstance?
It's unclear to me who's speaking.
I'm sorry, this is?
Okay, thank you. The yellow box now lit up.
Yeah, thanks.
That is a question I know I'm gonna, I'm gonna screw up and give wrong information. I believe Massachusetts is one. I could look it up. I know Massachusetts is one. I can't remember the others. I believe Commissioner Moore is raising his hand, and I presume he has the answer to that.
Yes. Yes, New York, New Jersey, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Hawaii from the reports that I have.
Thank you, and it's good to see you, Commissioner Moore.
Likewise.
Thank you. Before we get into this, let me just explain a little bit more about what we're, I mean by a discussion. We're not going to be able to take any action today. However, as a result of the discussion, we can give some work to Post and ask Post employees to make presentations at our next meeting, which is in October. So as we're discussing things, please think about the kinds of issues you'd like them to further research for us and the kind of presentations you might want to have. So now, opening up to all the commissioners, your comments on certification slash decertification. You could raise your hand, I could see you. Yes, Commissioner Bowie?
Hi, Joyce.
Hi.
Good to see you.
You too.
Welcome, our new commissioners. Glad to have you here. I'm, I'm looking forward to meeting you in person. So my question is, what will the staffing needs look like if we go down this route? And do we know, I, you probably haven't done a deep dive into this, but what is involved with, is there a review board that goes over each of these individual cases?
Sure. I'll take the, the second part first. Commissioner Bowie? Commissioner Bowie, I think in most states, there is some kind of a committee or a commission or a board that hears the matters. It's generally not an automatic decertification. I believe some states do allow for an automatic decertification for a criminal conviction, but for misconduct and any other, any other allegation, even if it's for not meeting continuing education, many times goes before a board or a committee or a commission. In terms of the staffing, it's hard to tell. Every post is extremely very, very different. You know, a lot of the posts on the East Coast are very focused on compliance. Some other posts are focused on training and standards. We, and at Post in California, have really focused on standards and training. We do play a compliance component, but not as much as some of the others on the East Coast. So it's hard to articulate how many people it would take or what resources it would take. It would depend on how deep or not deep the legislation takes us, right? It's, some states, you know, we spoke with Oregon, they have approximately 5,000 peace officers, I believe. They have two people, according to them, that are dedicated fully to decertifying officers. They said that they really could use four people to do that. We have 100,000 potentially at Post, right? We have 80, almost 84,000 or 84,000 full-time peace officers. We have Level 1 reserves, approximately 8,000. Then we have Level 2s and Level 3s, so approximately 100,000. So it just depends on how, how involved Post would be in that process. What would be required of Post, I guess, is the issue. It's very difficult for us to answer.
Manny, you mentioned some legislation. Is there some legislation on decertification now? And if so, can you update us?
So there are two bills that are, that are moving through the legislature right now. One is on misconduct. And it doesn't go so far as addressing decertification, but it includes Post in the receipt of alleged misconduct information. It also mandates certain things happen at the law enforcement agency in terms of investigations, but it doesn't go so far as to allow or require decertification. There's another bill, that, that bill's moving through the Assembly. There's a bill in the Senate that requires Post to decertify officers under certain criteria. That bill has a number of different components. I'll kind of hit on the big ones at first and then kind of the smaller ones below it, but not, the smaller ones don't mean it's less work necessarily for Post. They're just smaller pieces of the bigger theme. In that bill, there's two areas that kind of we, as we look at it, just bifurcate it. One is investigations. It, if we, if we understand the bill correctly, it requires Post to conduct investigations of alleged misconduct, certain allegations of misconduct. It defines what some of those criteria are. It also gives the ability to the commission to add other potential topics. So there's the investigative component of it. And then there's the actual decertification and collection of fees component. And we've kind of combined those two because they go hand in hand. What it basically says is that a basic certificate can be revoked, that a basic certificate is rescinded every two years and must be reissued by Post for an officer or a peace officer once, as long as they're in good standing and pay a fee. That also includes some language that says that an individual who has yet to obtain a basic certificate, because as we all know, the basic certificate is issued by Penal Code or must be issued after the completion of probation within two years of being sworn in, it requires Post to issue proof of eligibility certificates to those individuals in that interim period. And again, requires the basic certificate to be removed every two years for every officer. The fiscal component of it is that it requires that each peace officer pay a fee to obtain their proof of eligibility as well as their certificate, their basic certificate. So there would be an issuance discussion for us as to how we would do that, as well as how we would collect those fees. There are some other components beneath that that are also significant components that are embedded into the bill. For instance, things that we would have to consider is, one, we would be collecting data that we don't now collect. So we would have to build a platform to collect it. We'd also have to build a platform to secure it. There are some reporting requirements which would require us to notify officers when they're under investigation, to notify the departments when they're under investigation, to make notifications to the, to the board, I believe is what it's called in the, in the, in the bill or to the commission, and to report back to the legislature with activities in regards to decertification, a number of different activities. And it would also require that we build or have an entity within Post to receive misconduct complaints from the public, from the community. So those are kind of the main principles of that current legislation, whatever it may turn out to be. We will see in the next few weeks.
Both legislations address the issue of a law enforcement officer who's under investigation and then quits, and therefore, there is no investigation beyond that in the present situation. But did either the bills address the fact that just because someone quits doesn't mean the investigation doesn't continue with an eye towards decertification?
So I believe the Assembly Bill does require that an investigation be complete for resignation or some kind of separation during an investigation. And I believe the bill going before the Senate, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at, at the staff over there, that that bill also requires an investigation to be complete within a certain time period.
In terms of the investigation, there's some people who believe the investigation should be done by the law enforcement agency where the person works. And apparently, there's some legislation that suggests that Post should take on this investigation. Am I understanding that correctly?
So this legislation, if we understand the bill correctly, it requires Post to conduct the investigations. I don't think it forbids a law enforcement agency from conducting their own investigation. So there could be a parallel internal investigation, but I believe it requires Post to conduct investigations when certain criteria are met.
Other comments, commissioners?
Madam Chair, John Mcgran.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The, the bill, one of the bills that Manny was just talking about, that actually State Sheriff supports is, is the Assembly Bill 1299 from Sallis that, that addresses that specific issue that's more in line with bullet point number two on the agenda today. And, and we all know that that is a loophole that could be fixed and I think would make a difference. For those that don't know, if, if an officer or deputy sheriff's under investigation and it's significant, they can resign or retire, and then the investigation stops. Post is notified at that point that they resigned or they retired, but they don't have any record of what occurred. We won't either in our organization because the investigation's never completed, so it doesn't end up in that person's personnel file. And, and a lot of the concern in the public, and rightfully so, is that folks can go from one agency to another, and, and the hiring agency hires the person without the knowledge of that previous allegation and/or start of an investigation. So that Sallis bill fixes that by requiring the agency to continue the investigation regardless of whether the person remains employed, and then notify Post of the results of that investigation so that if somebody asks about that employee through Post, that information can be shared. So it doesn't really decertify or require Post to decertify, but, but it does fill in that gap where potentially misconduct won't be discovered in the background process by any other agency. And if the, and if the background doesn't reveal that, you know, sometimes we're hiring folks that we wouldn't normally hire because we don't have any information about that. So that loophole should be fixed, and 1299 does fix that. I'm a bit concerned about the responsibility and requirements that would be put on Post if they were required to do administrative investigations on law enforcement officers in this state with close to 100,000 law enforcement officers. Not sure Post could deal with that. And additionally, the money that would take for them to hire the staff and ramp up and all of that. I think, you know, the investigation's done at the local level, whether it be internally, like we do most of ours internally due to our size. But I also do investigations for the other police agencies in our county that, for whatever reason, choose not to because there might be a, a conflict or whatever may be, we go investigate on their behalf. And so I think that model works well. I know it doesn't work well everywhere, but it works well for us. And I think that would, that would reduce the potential workload that Post would be required if that other bill passes.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Good to see you. And Commissioner Ramirez, I see your hand raised. Yes, please.
My question is to Commissioner McMahon, does that also, if, does that bill cover if the person no longer, if they resign or retire, what duty they have to keep cooperating with the investigation?
They won't have any duty to cooperate. It's just the investigation continues without their statement. So if they haven't been interviewed by the time they, they resign or retire, you can't compel the interview because they're no longer an employee. But the investigation will continue by interviewing those folks that are appropriate, gathering the evidence, and packaging it up the way they have it.
And I also think it brings up a different issue that, you know, maybe we need to look at, you know, pre-qualifications, you know? If you, if you have someone who's failed a couple of backgrounds and now you're the third agency that's getting that person, I think we need to put some guidelines on that. Like, why would you pick someone out that's already failed two or three backgrounds? That sounds ridiculous to me. If you can't pass the first one, maybe there's something, you know, that, to that agency. But when you get to the second and now you're on the third, or even your fourth, and you're getting picked up by a law enforcement agency, I think that, that's a problem, there's a bigger problems waiting to happen. So maybe we take a look at that, too, down the road?
Commissioner Ramirez, would you educate me? Would a, would a subsequent organization that was considering hiring somebody necessarily have information that they applied to other organizations and had been rejected?
They should. In the background packet, it asks you, have you applied for any other agencies and where have you, where have you gotten in that process? So I think we've talked about it before, about looking at the background packets. I think that maybe down the road, and I don't know if to make a motion later about it, but that we take a look at the initial background and how that's conducted. So that might take some work off the back end. It'll take a while to catch up, but it could help.
As a follow-up to that, assuming the applicant was honest, and if they weren't honest, they're not going to get hired anyway, but assuming they were honest, they talked about that, is there a mechanism where you can contact the other law enforcement agency and ask to see the information or get the information as to why they were not hired?
I haven't done backgrounds, so I'm not exactly sure, but I'm sure Commissioner Brazil probably could answer that.
Does he want to?
Eve Berg, I could answer that as well. I mean, if Rick doesn't want to answer that, I can answer that.
I'll go for it, Eve.
Okay. So in the background package, not only do we do the investigation and ask all the other questions, how many other agencies they've applied for, and then what the resolution was in each of those, if they're currently in progress, if they were denied, if they were disqualified, all of that's in there. The other part of the background investigation, and this is actually through Post, is they sign a waiver. The applicant actually signs a waiver. And in that waiver, it entitles us to do so much more of the background investigation, contacting family members, neighbors, contacting prior organizations had they worked for. And in that, when we contact those prior investigation, prior agencies that they've worked for or have been disqualified for, because the waiver is signed, we are allowed to look at the reasons why they were disqualified, if there were any investigations that were pending or the person resigned in lieu of. We have the ability to look at all that. The other thing is, the, the three agencies that I've worked for, in each and every one of them, we, if there's a situation where there's such a significant investigation where the person ends up resigning in lieu of termination, we complete the investigation. And like Sheriff McMahon said, there are times where you can't compel them clearly because they no longer work for you because they resigned, but we absolutely resolve or adjudicate, if you will, and put a finding in that file, just in case they try to apply for someplace else. There is adjudication in that file. So that's my experience and what we've done, and also in the background investigations through Post that allows us to do certain things with waivers. So I hope that answered the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Berg. Any other comments about this subject? Yes, Commissioner Brazil?
Yes, one more thing to what Eve mentioned. That waiver applies to laterals. So if you're doing an investigation background, a lateral coming to your agency, and you discover something in that background of conduct that, that occurred, why they were employed with their current agency, you can share that information with their current agency. And that has been done in the past where we found something in a background, called the employing agency to let them know you got issues with your employee. So there's some, some really good stopgaps with that. It's just whether the agencies use it or not.
Thank you, Commissioner Brazil. Commissioner Moore?
Yes, I'm, I hope it's down the same path, but is there, my understanding is there the, there is the National Law Enforcement Academy Resource Network, NLEARN, that already links all the United States law enforcement training academies and provides a variety of information to law enforcement training managers. And now there's interest in different state requirements for peace officer certification. So I believe the ultimate goal of this thing of decertification is preventing those officers that are, might have questionable character. The ultimate goal is to empower police departments and the communities to partner together, prevent corrupt, incompetent, ineffective, and otherwise dangerous law enforcement officers from transferring is the ultimate goal. And so for some reason, despite what's already in place or what's already happening, we are seeing more and more times officers have transferred from one department or from one state to another. So the ultimate goal is to stop this from happening. So I don't know how we're saying this, as Commissioner McMahon said, we have these things set up, but these officers are still getting into other departments with questionable background. So someplace, as, as Commissioner McMahon said, there's a loophole, there's somehow they're slipping through, and that is what the effort is. So one, my question is, is there a national NLEARN network that Post certification across the nation are all connected? And is that a true statement?
Go ahead, Mr. President.
If I may, Madam Chair. So there is a national database that's run by the International Association of Directors of Law Enforcement Training Standards and Training, IADLIST. It's called NDI, that states can voluntarily populate with officers or individuals who have been decertified. Some states contribute that data and some states do not. Obviously, we don't decertify officers, so we don't supply information to them as to who has been decertified. So there is, there is a national database. It's run by an association. I think it was funded via a grant that expired long ago. I believe there's some federal legislation that, at one point, was moving through the Congress in, in DC that was going to require that that, that information go to that database on decertification of officers. So I think they were going to push it to that or create some other kind of national database, but it's called NDI and it's part of IADLIST.
So Commissioner Moore, it appears there's two loopholes. One is that some states, including California, do not decertify, therefore, they wouldn't be putting the information in. And the other is, it appears that if there's some option on the part of states, whether they want to send their information to this organization. So both of those would create significant loopholes. Let's see, Commissioner Bowie, didn't you have a comment? Let's see, Commissioner Boy, didn't you have a comment?
There we go. Okay, can you hear me now? Yes, okay, great. Yeah, we had a little bit of this this kind of discussion, I want to say it was last year when. Commissioner Tom Chaplin brought this up, the issue of decertification. And I I believe at that time I talked about something similar to 1299. I wholeheartedly agree with what Sheriff McMahon was talking about earlier that it does. Close some of those issues regarding these unfinished investigations and people being able to move on to other places without those agencies knowing. Or having the. The results of those investigations. So if 1299 passes, that will correct some of that. And then also I want to remind our commissioners about penal code eight thirty two point five B. Which mandates that agencies. Hold on to these type of investigations in the officer's personnel file for at least five years. So all these completed investigations will be there for the background investigators to review prior to any kind of. Prior to being employed.
Thank you, and thank you for that reminder. Other comments on this issue of certification slash decertification? Commissioner Long raising his hand or give us a peace sign? What are you doing there? Okay, great. Okay, so is that I think I called. Commissioner Long first, then Commissioner Doyle.
Uh, we're having an interesting conversation, but even at this moment, the Judiciary Committee is discussing the bill that would. Put a pretty big price tag on post. Manny, I'm wondering if you could address the bill, which is only probably moments from the Senate floor. Which makes it very close to the governor's desk, everything we're talking about. This bill has only been in print since Friday, I believe, so. Not had much of an opportunity to be analyzed or looked at. Hasn't been analyzed or heard in the Senate. There hasn't been a fiscal analysis. Manny, I believe you guys have you taken a preliminary look at least at this bill? And can you give us some range of what it would cost and how it would tax post?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Long. So yes, we were asked. Late Friday afternoon to put together a cost estimate for the for the governor's office, for the Department of Finance, as well as the Appropriations Committees. In the Capitol in terms of. As 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 the Senate bill stands today, what it would what it would look like. They are very much estimates on our part. It's very, very difficult to know where it's going to land. And it's also difficult to know how many investigations are going to be required. So we kind of extrapolated the number of peace officers. The number of investigations that we think might be required to be investigated by post. We kind of use the ballpark figure of 1,000 to 1,500 investigations in a given year. As we all know, those investigations, they could be, you know, simple. Hey, go out and interview one person and you have sufficient information or they could extend for a significant amount of time, obviously, and be very, very detailed. And laborious. So we estimated we would need at least 80 investigators to start at a minimum to conduct those investigations. I've heard, you know, both sides, hey, that's. You know, for the most part right on target. And then I've heard, hey, that's nowhere near enough to conduct 1,000 to 1,500 internal investigations. I've heard the number of internal investigations could also be off. It's hard hard for us to tell how many internal investigations are happening across the state because we don't get that data. But based on the number of separations, the number of retirements and resignations that that are going through our system and based on the numbers from other states. We use Oregon as a very, very good example, just because we had a lot of detailed discussions with Oregon on how they do things. And Oregon and Washington are very, very similar. They currently have on their pending list for decertification approximately 300, just over 300 individuals, actually. That are going through the decertification process. For us, that would require an investigation for each one of those. So, you know, if you multiply those numbers, 5,000, you know, we have 100,000. I think it would be very conservative to say we would have to conduct 1,000 to 1,500 investigations. So there's the investigative component and the support structure to conduct those investigations that would that we would have to factor in. Then there's the other component, the reporting, the reporting to the individuals, the reporting to the agencies, the reporting to the legislature. The collection of fees from individuals or from law enforcement agencies. And then the standing up of a complaint intake entity. We we basically said that we we believe we would need 80 investigators and I believe another 150 staff members. To support those investigations. We proposed that we would open offices in Southern California and in the San Francisco Bay Area because we have, you know, a majority of our peace officers are in Southern California. And obviously would require constant travel to do it from Sacramento. So I believe our the price tag that we submitted just as an initial estimate. Based on the salary figures and, you know, everything else, it was about $40 million recurring per year. I don't know if that's low or high. I've heard, you know, both sides, I've heard it's nowhere near enough to support investigations across the state. But it's a it's a it's a guestimate at this point is best. It's the best estimate we could put together for for the time being.
Thanks.
Anything else on that, Commissioner Long?
No, thank you, Manny.
Okay, and Commissioner Doyle and then Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Doyle.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Long's question covered part of mine. You know, this is a topic I think that's all overdue. However, it's unfortunate that it's been politicized. And to me, it's it's in the details. Manny, didn't you have a conversation also with the governor's office about? The criteria under which you would operate? And I'm not talking about the financial part and the number of investigators that you'd need.
So the. The criteria, you mean like a. An approach that we think we could employ to decertify officers? Is that what you're asking, Commissioner Doyle?
Because. Correct, because professions, you know, there's lots of professions that have this approach. I mean, doctors, attorneys, pharmacists, et cetera. And so, you know, what 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 is that? What is the approach that you discussed? Because to me, it's all in the matter of the details of how you would approach that.
Okay, okay, I think I can answer that. And I I want to be careful because obviously we are a state agency and we are neutral. We'll execute whatever comes out of the legislature. So in our discussions and to be very. Open because we had discussions with the Senator's Office, with the Governor's Office, with Department of Finance and everyone else involved as to how this could work. And how we could make it work. So we looked at a number of different models across the across the country and. The model that we looked that we thought was the most doable for us as a state. You know, from a fiscal component or fiscal fiscal aspect as well as an execution aspect is to. Yes, require that internal investigations be conducted by individuals when they separate in lieu of an investigation. That investigations be conducted, obviously, if they're still employed. But that the responsibility for conducting those investigations is for is for the law enforcement agencies, not for post for a number of reasons. One, obviously, is the magnitude of the investigations that we would have to conduct. Two. You know, we all. I I think every chief, every sheriff, every agency head is going to want to conduct their own internal investigation at their own department to know what's going on. As we all, as many of us know, when you conduct an internal investigation, they spin off into other areas and how would we handle that? So we do, we propose that it that it happen at the agency level, not by post. For those reasons and a few others. We also propose that essentially. That it is up to each agency to deal with misconduct issues for their employees. Yeah, they may, they probably should report that to post and we should keep track of that. But the 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 adjudication and what happens should happen within the agency. Once that individual separates from that agency, whether the person's terminated, whether the person resigns, retires, retires in lieu of. Then it would be our responsibility to decertify that officer. And when I say we, some state entity, whether it's post or some other entity and some commission or board to make those determinations. So. Let's take a hypothetical example of a person resigning during an internal investigation. We propose to all of those different entities that the investigation be conducted. That the person immediately go into an inactive status. Once they separate because they're leaving under an investigation. Once that investigation is complete. Then a determination would be made as to whether to decertify or not decertify the officer or the individual. Obviously, if it's not substantiated or not sustained, cannot be corroborated, then it should just, you know, there should be no action. And if it is sustained, then it's up to a a panel of individuals such as yourselves to make a determination whether to certify the officer or desert. Decertify the officer, but the person would be inactive during that time period until there is a resolution. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, and thank Commissioner Doyle. That's pretty much my sentiments is what the community has witnessed or is saying is we know that lawyers. Are disbarred for malpractice or not keeping the bar. We know that the California bar, they have to pass the test in order to become a lawyer. Much like with post, they have to go through post certification classes to become peace officers. So as an example, when we see someone who is obviously broken the the training manual and not practice. Let's say this last student that just happened the other day and pulling the gentleman by his shirt and then discharging the weapon in his back. Is nowhere certified training in post approved. So removing that person's certification almost simultaneously should not be a difficult decision by a department or by anybody. Because we know that's not part of the training. And I do believe that the community is looking for us to make a stance and to say that. Because too often we get caught up in the political or we get caught up in the legalities. And many of these officers then go behind the into the union or behind the police officers. Office and and they hide and we go through two years of trying to get rid of somebody who's obviously was not practicing certified police work. Or post certified work. So there should be not be an argument in many of these cases that the community is so outraged about. There's not a question. It's just the fact that do we have the political will or 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 do we have the desire to hold people to the standard that we say post sets out in our schools? And in our training? And so it's us saying to the community that we have set down a standard for training in order to be a police officer that you must maintain. And when you don't maintain it, that just like a lawyer or or the a national bar or the California bar would then pull back its. It it certification of you and there'd be a process possibly. Much like when someone is dispar this bar, they have to go through two or three years and do X, Y, and Z to be reconsidered to come back into the bar. So I don't know if Toby could answer that question on what that process is when someone is disbarred. But that's something that we have models out there that that should not be hard for an organization like us to adopt. Thank you.
I think I can handle that question as a 30 year attorney. First of all, I can tell you that there are some attorneys that have engaged in despicable behavior who still have their license. I can tell you that sometimes when attorneys behave in a despicable manner, they are temporarily suspended. And then they do go through a series of. Of processes. And at the end of that, they can get their license back. So I think if we're what I'm thinking about, and I think what all of us are thinking about is a law enforcement officer. Who behaves in such a manner that he should or she should be decertified. No one knows about it and they're not. And the next person who encounters that law enforcement officer and becomes a victim to the behavior that he should have been decertified or she should have been decertified before. So I'd like us to go beyond what the California bar does and make sure that those law enforcement officers that do have guns and badges. Have not been behaved have not behaved in a way that should have gotten them decertified. Other comments? And let me just check with the other attorney here. Want to add to that, Toby?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Moore. Working for the Attorney General's Office, I can tell you that we have a licensing division. And the licensing division does work with the various under the various statutory schemes. Because in California, a number of vocations are very highly regulated. And so this would obviously all have to be legislative since the commission doesn't currently have the statutory authority to do any of this. But if the legislature did that, then I'm presuming that one of the things that it would do is it would enact a statutory scheme with respect to effectively licensing. We're saying we're talking about certification and decertification, but I think effectively what's being discussed is is a licensing scheme, something akin to the way that medical doctors, lawyers. And other professionals are regulated in California. And so presumably what the legislature would do is there would be a licensing scheme and it would give due process to the officer. And as a result of that, there would be a legal process. And after the investigations were completed, depending on who completed them and after a decision was made. Then it would go through basically a licensing protocol. Where due process would be provided to the individual and there would be a chance to then review the decision of the board to see if it comported with due process on all of the various statutory provisions. But yes, certainly California has a very vigorous and extensive statutory scheme for regulation of professions. And I think that's what we're talking about doing, you know, as it is right now. Post does have a certificate program that it provides to officers. But as I understand the statute, those are basically diplomas that the officers get to keep. We don't currently have the statutory ability to effectively remove a license to to practice the job of being a peace officer. But it would be, Commissioner Moore, it would be basically whatever the legislature told us to do. Then that's the scheme that 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 would be that would be followed. And Manny, one thing I was going to mention to you is for purposes of the costs, keep in mind that if then the commission was going to be required to then work with. The licensing agency and the attorneys to defend the actions through that process, then there would also unfortunately be a legal cost component. That would probably be billed back to the commission. So just something else to keep in mind in terms of the building out the costs.
Thank you, Mr. Darden. Yes, I agree and we're aware of that. We understand with the Senate bill. That it also has a requirement that even after the board or the commission. The way I read it is there is a separate board that operates under the commission that makes the determination or the recommendation for decertification. Then that information goes to the commission, to this group of individuals to make that determination. And then the person has an automatic appeal right to an administrative law judge to review the commission's ruling. So yes, we understand there'd be some additional costs on top of that for us, both in terms of labor to take it to the to the ALJ as well as to pay for those fees. Yes, we did not factor that into that $40 million figure. We just haven't ever been in that arena to know how much that would cost us.
Thank you. Commissioner Brazil?
Let me get off mute. Thank you. A couple of questions, one for for Commissioner Long. You're you're referring to 731, SB 731, is that the one? We keep talking about numbers, I just want to.
Yes, 731.
Okay, perfect. And then a question for our esteemed legal counsel. You mentioned that it's going to take legislative requirements for us to get into a certification, decertification process. Is there anything within post that we can do? Or does that truly require legislative changes?
Well, you know, I suppose any proposal that any commissioner wanted to make, we could look at and see whether or not there's a way to fit it. could look at and see whether or not there's a way to fit it under the existing statutory authority. I mean, the commission does have fortunately a fairly broad statutory mandate to do all things. I believe it says all things necessary in order to accomplish the mission. So any creative thoughts we could certainly have staff look at. But, you know, my thought is going back, I'm looking back at the history of the current legislative provision on certification. And my recollection of this, although I'm not sure I was representing post at the time that these cases happened, was that there was a very vigorous defense and there were some cases and then ultimately the statute was written in a way that forbid post from withdrawing certificates once issued. And that was because based on the legal landscape at the time, through the, you know, the various voices and the decisions in effect at that time, the idea was that the certificate once issued is effectively a diploma that cannot be taken away. And so with respect to certification, that's, as I understand the statute as it currently stands. So I think if it is something as substantive, as removing an individual's right to practice in the profession of law enforcement, that would be difficult for us to shoehorn that within our existing statutory authority. And really, I think it would require legislation to set that up and establish the rights and establish the process whereby the commission made that determination. And then the mechanism under which the individuals could challenge it and be a decision based on whatever rules were established. But anyway, as I said, you know, any thoughts that anybody had, if they want to throw them out and they'd like the commission or staff to look at them and see whether or not we could do them, whether or not there is legislative change, then I'm sure we'd be willing to do that.
I agree with Mr. Darden. I think that it's probably legislative, but I think you also presented, Commissioner Brazil, an action item. And that's a request of post staff to look into the issue. Is there anything short of legislative change that would give post the power to decertify? Is that a request, Commissioner Brazil?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Opportunities for, I'll call them for better terms, low hanging fruit, some automatic disqualifiers to be a peace officer. Once your peace officer felony convictions, domestic violence, 5150s, start with that. So we start a process for those that we know are automatic disqualifiers and how we revoke, so to speak, the certificate if possible. But, and then continue to build on, like Manny had a list of other things, dishonesty and fraud, things that bring disrespect to, I mean, we can work ourselves into that without legislative potentially, but at the beginning, at least look at some of the things I think are a little bit easier to tackle without legislative changes, I think, but who knows? I'm not the lawyer.
And Commissioner Brazil, just, of course, I'm sure you're aware, there is an existing law with respect to felony convictions. And we could probably talk for an hour about the legal and factual landscape on that. But there currently is that law and there is a mechanism for posts to become alerted to those felony convictions. And there's currently a statute in the penal code that says, based on certain prerequisites and certain findings, that the commission can then make an entry into the individual's profile in the EDI exchange to say, I believe the language is this person is disqualified from being a peace officer, something along those lines. But again, that isn't, that isn't a licensing. It's not like we can pull their license to practice law enforcement. It's simply an entry on the EDI so that presumably if another agency did a background on that officer, they would then see in the EDI that disqualification and be aware of the felony. So that's the current statutory authority that the commission has. But again, that's only on the issue of felony convictions. It doesn't apply to the other, you know, numerous areas that you were speaking of.
And going back to attorneys again, I can tell you that it's incumbent upon the district attorney's offices throughout the state to notify the state bar if an attorney is being charged the crime. Again, that is not something that we necessarily have set up now for law enforcement officers. We're talking now about felony convictions. So these are the important details. Manny, do you have any questions about the request that Commissioner Brazil has made in terms of post investigating this issue?
No, I do not have any questions. We understand that you would like a presentation and an action, an action item or, I mean, an action item is something to vote on. We'll do our best to put something together in terms of an action item, but we'll definitely put it on for October.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments about decertification? Yes, Commissioner Tubbs?
Thank you, Chair. And Manny, quick question. The $40 million number you threw out in terms of cost, is that, that's per year, correct?
That is correct. That was primarily staff, included office space for the staff. Right now, we have a staff of 135 personnel. That is what we're funded for. And I believe this was 230 or so new individuals that would be required. 95% of it was for staff costs.
And then a quick comment, I would just say I strongly support what Commissioner Brazil presented. And even if legislative change is made, I'd still encourage work on that because as we know, the funding may not come or it's going to take time to ramp up. But there's probably things we can do in the interim to show the public a good faith effort to get it right. So thank you, Commissioner Brazil, for that staff direction. I'm strongly in support of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Tubbs. Now, Commissioner Brazil, did you have something further to say? Oh, it's Commissioner Long. I know you have something further to say, Mr. Commissioner Brazil, but right now I'm calling on Commissioner Long.
No, no.
My answer was no. I had nothing else.
Come on. Commissioner Long, did you have something?
No, I would only point out that a certain, I mean, personally, I believe a decertification scheme would be important and should be adopted. I'm a little concerned just personally that we're at this juncture where the bill's being heard as we speak. There's already been a motion to pass. It will skirt the fiscal committees, so it will go to the floor. As near as I could tell, trying to keep an eye on it or an ear on it right now, I believe, I believe most all law enforcement agencies were opposing the bill. Not an ideal way to create the ideal decertification scenario, even if there is agreement to do that. So just point of fact, we may be hearing about this bill quite a bit in the next couple of days. There's only a few days till the end of session, so.
Thank you. Any other comments at all about decertification? Commissioner O'Rourke, good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, I believe the bill is going to go to the floor as well. And Jeff, I think you are right. The most law enforcement agencies, if not all, are opposed as the way it's currently written, but they're also willing to work with the author on coming up with a solution. As far as the budget goes wise, what I remember is I think it was like a $40 fee. And with the 80,000 employees or law enforcement, that's about, what, 3.2 million? And with your projection of 40 million a year, I believe that was a two-year cycle on the collection of fees. So that concerns me. Manny, is there a way, or maybe this is better for Toby, I'm not sure, if there's a way to suspend a license, especially like in the case of the 1299 bill where they resign in lieu of or retire in lieu of, that it holds a certificate so that person can't be placed in another job in another agency? I know there's limited on the boxes that go across the top of what keeps a certificate and all that. So I'm just curious if there's a better way or mechanism that we could do that to either place a certificate on hold or suspend it until a investigation is complete and really put the onus back on that person that may have resigned or retired to have that investigation completed, to either exonerate him or gone through an appeals process and to get that suspension lifted.
Commissioner O'Rourke, thank you for the question. And I use the term inactive, and I believe it's synonymous with suspended or suspension. In other words, if an individual resigns in lieu of, retires in lieu of, or is terminated, they immediately, it terminated for cause under whatever is going to be defined in SB 731 or by the commission. If they're terminated for those reasons, they automatically go into a suspended or inactive status till the investigation is either complete or it's brought before the board, the commission with a challenge to unsuspend or remove the inactive status. So in theory, they would not be able to go to another agency. They wouldn't be able to leave one agency under a cloud, so to speak, and then get hired by some other agency until it gets resolved. Did that, did that answer your question, Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yeah, I believe it did. And I kind of go back to Commissioner Bowie's comment. I believe we spoke, when Chaplin brought it up a couple of years ago, the discussion, as I remember, had a lot to do with agencies weren't doing a proper background check before they were employing these applicants. So I don't know if there's a way to better do a background check for these agencies or, but I believe that was part of that conversation back then.
I think that Commissioner O'Rourke is making a suggestion, and if he's not, then I'm going to make this suggestion. In addition to the other ways that we might be able to take a closer look at decertification without using legislation, perhaps we could take another look at the background checks and see if there's anything else that post can be doing in terms of aiding agencies in terms of the thoroughness of background checks. Does that sound fair, Commissioner O'Rourke?
That sounds fair.
Okay, thank you. Please, go ahead.
If I may, we will include that for the October presentation. I'm going to look at Scott's logins over there, but I believe that we updated our background manual to, or we are updating it to require that they check the previous agency before they hire the individual. Obviously, most do that, but I think we're putting that in there as a requirement. Is that correct, Scott?
That is, that is correct, Mr. Executive Director.
Hey, Meyer. That is correct, Mr. Executive Director. We just changed it, so those components are added. So as part of the background process, it is incumbent on the hiring authority to verify that the applicant is, in fact, qualified as far as their requisite training requirements.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez, did you have a comment? I thought you had a question or comment a few minutes ago.
No, I didn't, but I do now. I was just going to say, to add to the background, I think one thing we need to consider though in these backgrounds is that we're also facing a time where we're having a hard time recruiting. So we're kind of like on the, you're going to have to like find a way to navigate through this because we also, you know, talked about, I think in the past meeting, relooking at backgrounds where people that, you know, want to be cops and we don't let them be cops based on their background. And I think for an example is you have somebody that was, you know, when they were, you know, 15, got caught shoplifting and then, you know, they're 21 applying and they've got that on their background. So I think that when we look at this, we need to look at the totality of how we're going to do this because we've got to find a way to get these people in that, you know, I don't know, like a lot of questions on a background would be, have you ever? And maybe we look at that language a little bit better, but yet at the same time not open the door to big bad apples that we don't want. So it's kind of a slippery slope that we're on right now, but we need to make it a little easier for hiring for agencies, but that's still easier for agencies to weed out the bad seeds. Do you see what I'm saying? So it's, it feels like it's a really big task for post workers right now to try to figure out how we're going to balance all that.
And clearly recruitment and retention are major issues for us right now in California. It's third on our agenda, so we will be discussing that further. Any other comments from anybody else? And I think we have incorporated one and two in our discussions. So before we take the next break, I'd like to ask if anybody has any questions or comments about, one, law enforcement certification slash decertification, or, two, resignation and retirement of police officers in lieu of investigation. Seeing none, it is now 11:35 and we'll come back at 11:45. Thank you. Thank you. We need to start back up, waiting for Manny and Maria. Maria's here and Manny's here. Okay, great. Just a little housekeeping. We're losing a few of the commissioners for a variety of reasons. So let me just tell you that we're going to stop at 1 o'clock. If there's still more information that we need to be discussing, we'll take an hour break and come back at 2:00. Otherwise, we'll end at 1:00. Moving down our list of discussion items, we have recruitment, morale, and retention of law enforcement personnel. I put this, or I asked Manny to please put this on the agenda because I'm very concerned about what's happening with law enforcement throughout the state of California. We've been having retention and it says resignation. And we've had recruitment and retention problems in the past. I think in the past, we've had actually more recruitment problems than we have retention. With the morale being in the state that it's in now, we're also seeing a lot of resignations. So what I'm looking for is some discussion items so that what we can do as Post commissioners to increase the morale of law enforcement officers in the state of California and to retain the best law enforcement officers we can. So comments, thoughts? Commissioner Ramirez, thank you.
I'll help you out there a little. I think, like, I've talked to Post before about our, you know, social media. And I think if we start highlighting more of our positive things, that might help, you know? Even if we do, like, you know, nominating your fellow officer, we're just, you know, we've got all this negative stuff and all this negative stuff mostly from other states that influence us, right? And people don't feel supported. But I think if we, you know, open it up in a way where public can put comments, like, you know, we're going to get bad comments. I know that. Someone has to monitor that. But I think we need to start, you know, we don't do enough to brand ourselves and sell our message about, we're not in the media like the rest of these states normally. Hopefully, we stay out of it. But we do such a good job here. We have such great commissioners that are just looking out for law enforcement throughout the state. But we're not selling that enough to the public. And, you know, I don't know, I know that Scott was working on it, but we're always, as far as our Facebooks, our Instagrams, things like that, that are getting out there and showcasing this meeting. You know, I know we have Facebook, but we need these other medias that, you know, public are on. And we need to focus on the positive and give people hope, you know? Like, the cops in California feel beat up. I mean, I'm sure they feel beat up all over, but, you know, they, they're, it's changed so much, you know? You have to document everything you do and you're blue teaming and you're getting I-aided over every little complaint because it has to be followed through now because it's, we're such the main stage right now. So I think just way to showcase the positives and the positive things that people are doing. You know what Dawn and Nuno just did by, you know, finding Christie? Granted, that, I'm sure that's on Placer stuff, but it should be on Post's websites, too. Like, it should, we need to find these little things that people are doing and showcase them a lot more and try to balance the evil that we've been tagged with with the good that we do.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. And I think that that is another thing we can put on our action item, hopefully for October, is if Post can give us an update on the website and what Post can do to highlight the great work that law enforcement officers are doing throughout the state of California. And I agree, what happened in Placerville County is a great story and it's important that that story get out beyond Placerville County. Other comments? I can tell you one thing that I've done in Santa Barbara as a district attorney. I sent a letter to every law enforcement officer in Santa Barbara County, sheriff, police departments, et cetera, just telling them how much I appreciate the work that they're doing now, telling them that we have very high standards in Santa Barbara County. I can speak of my county and the high standards that we have in terms of our expectations for how law enforcement officers interact with the public and reminding them how much we appreciate the work that they are already doing. I thought it was a rather innocuous letter, but about 12 different law enforcement officers from 12 different divisions in Santa Barbara County sent me an email telling them how much that letter meant to them. And again, when I wrote it and when I sent it out, I had no idea that it was the kind of thing that they needed to hear from their district attorney, but they do. So I think it's important now that we find people, we catch people doing something good and we let them know that they're doing it well, whether you're the district attorney or a sergeant. It feels good to be appreciated and they need that now in order to do the life-threatening work that they do day in and day out. Other comments about recruitment, morale, and retention of law enforcement officers? Commissioner Bowie?
Hi, Joyce. I was lucky enough to read your letter that you wrote to your officers in your county. You're not my DA, but I was, it made me very emotional to read that because there was a lot of support that I, that I, that came out of that letter. But you also made it a point to say that we will hold you accountable if you are not following training or the laws or, you know, the ethical standards that have been set forward. So thank you very much for that letter. I actually forwarded that to several of my colleagues and they said that that was amazing.
I'm blushing on this side, but I really didn't think it was that amazing. Thank you for saying that, but I think that the need was so big that what little I said was, meant a lot to those who read it.
Right, right, right. And, you know, I think that the praise, the kudos shouldn't just come from our internal resources, such as our own agencies or from Post. I think that what the public has to say, our government leaders, our community leaders, what they have to say, impacts us greatly. Being an officer who does dawn a uniform every single day, and I do work on the street every day, it does, it is hurtful to hear people or have people come up to us and be very angry. I do understand it and I do try to take the time to talk to people to build those relationships, to maybe mend some of those wounds. But we are people and, you know, when you hear it over and over again, just the negative reactions from the community, it would be great to have some sort of way for our leaders, community leaders, and people in government to bring forth some of that positive support. So my question, I guess, would be, or my, what I would like to hear from is from maybe like Reverend Jethro Moore, some of our new members, whether or not there's something that we can do to bring that type of support forward. I know that there are a lot of challenges and there are a lot of bridges to build, but it would be really great for us to find a way to let our officers know that while we are trying to fix things as best as we can, that we have your support while we fix it, try to fix it.
Thank you. Reverend Moore, would you like to make some comments?
I think that a lot of the community members, can't speak for all of them in general, but want to see changes being made. Want to see, one is even when we talk about, at least, the forms of community oversight. I don't like to use the word, I don't like to use the word oversight or I've been taught not to use that word. Look at it as a partnership. And we have to get returned to policing the community as a partnership and not as, and that's some of the language that sometime that the departments use. Boots on the ground or you come into the community and often tell or make jokes, or not mostly make jokes, but try to keep it light as well. When you come into the communities and you're all booted up with all this riot and armored gear, but we never see you on a level where you're just like us in your biker shorts. I say the biker shorts are the most innocent and most harmful things, but genuine community outreach is going to have to start all over again because even here in my department, San Jose, I'll use the San Jose Police Department. And in the last year, it's been incident after incident from cops posting racist things on Facebook, from even the chief posting UFW on the Facebook. And it's like, nobody seems to, police departments don't seem to understand that the police department does not belong to the union, but the police department belongs to the community. And the partnership and the relationship has to not be the police department and the union, but police department and the community, you know? And so when you have more buy-in or more respect and more care about how your community relates to you, you have a better relationship. But when, it's so often for me and where I'm at, the propaganda that comes out of the unions is almost frightening as though it's a separation and you no longer feel like you're part of the community. And some of our policing used to be the police live where they worked. But now they don't live where they work and so they're even viewed more as an outside group that comes in. And we don't see you anymore. We don't, we don't see you, like, P.A.L. used to be Police Athletic League and there was boxing and there was football and there was interaction. There was other inaction. That's all gone. But until we start, I think the community starts saying, when we have bad cops and you guys have, not you guys, but we have bad cops in our departments. And when we can't get rid of them or we can't move them out because of some union class or this last incident with Facebook, what our cops posting racist stuff on Facebook, then you tell us you're going to come in and police us. No, we don't see that. And when we want those cops gone or removed, they're not removed and they're still there or they seem to be protected. So again, it's some of the clauses that are in policing that have to give your departments more power to remove those who've slipped in, who've come in. And that's what we have to do. And really, and when we make a mistake, very often we say we're sorry and then I'm going to close with this. I'll go on and on, but one thing that even my DA, Jeff Rosen, I said, Jeff, as a district attorney here, you've never said black lives matter. And the whole issue isn't that police lives don't matter. It's the fact that blacks keep getting killed that are unarmed by police officers. And black community has to sit there. So often, we saw the guy who shot up the church in Carolinas. We saw the police catch him, take him to a hamburger stand and feed him. You know, but we see a black man in the same state unarmed, running from a cop that gets shot in the back. We've too often have seen cops do more damage to black people when they're unarmed, but yet when it comes a white citizen, there's no harm done to him. There is problems. And so it's something in the training, it's something in the psyche, it's something there somewhere that you're taught to fear African Americans. Where nine times out of 10, most of us, when you pull us over, are unarmed. And I think most of, I can't speak for the gentlemen that are on the screen with me today, have had more horrific introductions to police than we've had friendly. And I can tell you, right from riding a bike in my home city, getting pulled over for riding a bike in question and put up against the police car and I was just riding 10 speed to the mall. Or I was driving down Santa Teresa Boulevard with baby seats in my backseat and paperwork on the front and got picked up by a cop and slammed on the hood. In the middle of the day, I had done nothing wrong and it was because I didn't have a front license plate on my car. You know, and so this is the stuff that you'll go through an African-American community and nine times out of 10, they've had this experience. And the challenges for us is, is working in this field is how do we change that? And how do we hold those officers that do that accountable? So I don't know if I answered your question, but that's some of the things that, and you'll see it from the NBA players and you'll see it from the football players and you'll see there's not a black family that has not been touched by this. And the man that was pulled by his shirt and shot yesterday, there were three kids in that car who will grow up despising police. And they'll have friends and they'll teach friends what happened to them. And it just continues to spread that there's a distrust. And we trace that back to some of the history of policing. And so when you hear us, and I don't have a thing against cops. I have a thing against bad cops. I have a thing against cops that don't do their job or do their job over physically. I have a thing when a cop pulls you over and gets out the car and starts yelling at me and I've not even done anything. And I just want to say, the other night in front of my house, there was a couple were fighting or whatever and the girl come to my door. And so I go outside and talking with her. And when the police pull up, when they get out the car, it was the over-aggressiveness for somebody who was having a mental crisis. And if I would not have been standing there, I do believe, and told the young lady, hey, just calm down, just talk. And because she had a relationship with me, she kept her eyes on me. I kept her fissured on me. We were able to de-escalate. But if I would not have been out there, that same incident would have went physical when it just sometimes takes time to listen to what the person's saying. And it just takes time to talk to them and not be so quick to, I want to put hands on them. That's all.
May I res-
Please.
May I respond to Jethro real quick?
Commissioner Barcelona, you're next, but go ahead.
So, Jethro, thank you for your spirited comments. We have a thing, I have a thing against bad cops too. Okay, we don't want to work around them. We don't want them anywhere near us because they make our jobs absolutely miserable. So, for that, we are all on the same page. So, I agree with you. There has to be accountability across the board. That I agree with you. What I'm asking for, and I'm, what I'm asking, if it's even possible, is can we get some positive reinforcement from our community, our community leaders, our, our government while we work on making these changes? That is the request. I know that's a hefty one. So, that's, I'll just put that out there.
I, I, I do want to tell you, I use my police department with San Jose. And if Eddie was here, he was, he would attest to the fact that when I did see an officer go run across an officer or situation and they did what I felt was a proper procedure, there was calls and I let him know that they did good and that I was very proud of him of those, those officers. And so, that's something that should work both ways by any community leader when he does see officers that perform bravely or correctly. You should make sure that we do speak out in support of those, but at the same time, it's, it's the, it's the big secrecy. It's not wanting no one to look over, look over from the outside, look in. It's not wanting to be, have community oversight as part of, as part of the process. It's part of the process of when you have video cameras, video cameras are supposed to help us see what was going on, but then we get the video cameras. Now, like when we had the protest down here, we're four or five months out and you still don't want to let no one see what really happened because you say you have an ongoing investigation. You know, it's, it's the over-in secrecy that is inside of policing, that this big shield, and we have to bring that shield down in order to let it to be transparency, to let people in and let people see. If we're really trying to do what's right for everyone, police officer safety is paramount. All of us go to our jobs and want to come home when we leave that door. When I leave out of here tonight and I go, and I go somewhere, I expect to come home. And every person should have that right and we should be supporting that. But just the same as when we get pulled over by a police officer, a person in the community should not have to fear this could be the last time they see their loved one or they see their kids. When our, when our kids go out, my kids go around the corner, I live in South San Jose, a predominantly white neighborhood, when they go around the corner, I'm on next door, almost automatically make sure that the community is not complaining because there's two black kids out there just being kids at the park. And that when the police show up, they don't come in and over pandally mistreat my kids, you know? And so, that's a fear that only police department, when you have more transparency, that you're going to have to help change that. Because we, we're not going to call you to, to help us, you know? Very seldom, you know, we're going to call, we're going to try to fix it ourselves. So, most black people are law-abiding citizens and want the law to be held upright in our communities. But at the same time, it's, it's when Uncle Ben has had too much to drink or something, do we need to try to handle him? Or if we call the police, will this end up into a wrestling match where he's tased, he's shot or he's drug away and arrested when it was just, you know, a little incident? But yes, every community person, from our perspective, should commend the police officers when we see good work, much like the interaction I had with the cops that over here the other night. He came back to the door and he thanked me and I thanked him for helping and for him allowing me to participate as he dealt with the woman. That exchange should happen more often, but, but, and that's something that's, that's going to take a long time, a long time. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Barcelona.
Yeah, well, you know, lots been said here, but one of the things that keeps getting brought up are things people are seeing in the news with shootings and so on in other states. I don't think there's a commissioner on this meeting right now that knows the totality of the circumstances of those shootings. I, I don't, and I bet you nobody here does. Everybody here knows a piece of it because of what they've gotten in the news. Everyone knows the news slants right or left depending on what channel you watch, but you're not getting the totality of the circumstances. As commissioners, we are set at a much higher level. And I really think that, you know, if we're going to make comment or we're going to start talking about these type of instances, then we should know the totality of the circumstances on these events. Because having been in law enforcement a long time and been in lots of altercations and, you know, life-threatening situations in years, I can tell you, you know, you can, you can go from a nice smiley person for, you know, go to see Uncle Ben because he's had a drink and the next thing you know, you're in a fight for your life because Uncle Ben's grabbed a knife or accessed a weapon somewhere and it could be a life-threatening situation. But if we're going to comment on these things, we really should know the totality of the circumstances on them. And, you know, I don't, I feel like as a commissioner, I don't know enough to make a comment on almost any of those instances because all I know is what I've seen in the news, just as any of you. And that's something that if we're going to have a high-level discussion as a commission about use of force issues and we're going to bring up specific instances, then everybody here should know the totality of those circumstances before we engage in discussion. Because most of us are only getting a piece of what we saw on the news and we're getting little bits of opinion from different newscasters or maybe people in the neighborhood. And having been a professional investigator for years, I want to know everything that I can know about the situation before I render or make a suggestion or a recommendation. So, you know, I understand the comments here and are pulling on people's emotions, but I just don't think that hardly anybody here, unless you're a chief or something, and it's in your own department, you probably know about a life-threatening incident that happened. But for the most part, we don't. So, if we're going to comment about those things, I'd like to know about, I'd like to know the totality of the circumstances so that we can engage in a useful conversation about them. The other thing is, is we were talking about, Mr. Tubbs, do you want to, do you want to get in here? Or can I finish?
No, I just wanted to make sure the chair is on my hand, but please finish, Commissioner.
Okay. The other thing, I think, I don't think that putting things on the, you know, a Facebook page, you know, thanking police for their job or anything is going to help us with recruitment. Police officers have a, you know, very, very, very hard job in California. I'm not going to mention the rest of the country because I'm not a commissioner for, for the peace officers, the rest of the country, but it's a very difficult job. And I think when, when the legislature and/or the, or the post starts putting the licensing program together and the complaint process, we need to give that a tremendous amount of thoughtfulness because you're going to have, you're going to have attorneys and once people find out that they can start filing a complaint for anything and that post is going to investigate a complaint for anything, it's going to, you're going to be flooded with, you know, one, all it'll take is one riot situation and you'll have, you know, 50 people make a complaint about the people who were there and post will be inundated. So, you know, the other thing with, we were talking about this, just throwing numbers around maybe a few months ago and we, we had estimated about around $80 million. One of the things that post's going to have to do is they're going to have to have an army of lawyers that are going to have to, I would imagine, DAGs. I don't think that Mr. Darden's going to be handling all of them, but you're going to have to have an army of lawyers to handle the legal issues that are going to be coming up and the counter lawsuits from everybody, you know, regarding things that are going on. So, we've got a lot of work to do and a lot of thoughtfulness. But I do think if we're going to start discussing shootings from other states and even in this state, the commission should know the totality of that circumstance, of those circumstances before we engage in it. Because I don't know everything that I, that I would need to know to talk about it here. I don't want to talk about it from my, just how I feel. I want to talk about from what is actually known and proven. Thank you.
Commissioner Barcelona, thank you. As the person in my county who decides on each officer-involved shooting incident, it, it does take months and I never want to engage in any kind of rush to judgment. So, certainly, we all want to be thorough. On the other hand, I understand what Commissioner Moore is saying and I have no doubt that each of those experiences that Commissioner Moore observed or was the victim of were horrific and life-altering. So, I think we want to be able to not rush to judgment in making decisions, but also understand that a lot of the people in our community have been hurt and their voices are very real and it's now upon us to make a difference in their lives. So, thank you both for your comments. And I believe the next one was Commissioner Ramirez, followed by Commissioner Tubbs.
I just want to say, I agree with what Commissioner Barcelona just said about, you know, discussing these shootings. And I really think it's really our place unless it really affects us and we know it. But it also brings up a couple of other issues. Commissioner Brazil had brought up like, when is post going to start reaching out on a bigger level? We can help some of these other states stay out of trouble. But I'll let him talk about that. But I want to go back to what Commissioner Moore said. And everything he said is even more the reason why we need to put our good deeds out more. So, our, you know, these negative things are a lower percentage versus a positive thing. And I think what Commissioner Woo is getting to is like, what positive things can we get from these outside? Not, not let's focus on the bad car stop or that. I get that, those things get addressed individually by the agencies, but let's address the good stuff, let's start bringing some positive to our law enforcement officers. Like I, you know, Lila and I still work with the, you know, guys that are working patrol and we had to start taking comments from the public and, you know, they, they came in, they put them on post-its on the doors to make our guys feel better because they don't want to make car stops anymore. They don't want to respond to calls because they don't feel supported, they don't feel needed. And these incidents that are on other states, like, let's help them out to be better, better-run states and help them with their training. And yeah, we're going to address our issues here, but we're, California luckily aren't the ones making the headlines right now. So, as commissioners, let's help the other states bring their law enforcement agencies up to the standards that we are. But if, I know there's bad things out there, Commissioner Moore, I'm not denying any of that, but I'm saying from the other aspect of it, let's bring some positive to help these guys feel good about when they go out there and to see these stories and see how other officers handle things that are positive and to be reminded like, hey, sometimes it's just the way you talk to people, right? Like that's, a lot of people just have the gift of gab and can make it through anything. But like Barcelona said, sometimes you go out and you don't get that option. It's just a fight's on the minute you pull up. And I think it's educating everybody. I think, you know, social media is just the way people go now and it's all about education and, and telling people, hey, we don't train people to pull people by the back of their shirt and shoot, but like Barcelona said, we don't know the totality of the situation. Maybe they had knowledge that there's a gun in there, maybe he saw a gun, we don't know. So, I, I agree, we shouldn't be discussing that. But I'm digressing too, I want to get back to what Lila said. We need, we need positive and we need other community members like yourself, Commissioner Moore, to find a platform to get this stuff out because we're sinking. We're sinking in negativity and we've got to fix that. So, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Tubbs.
Well, first, thank everyone. I think I've told my police chief yesterday, it's been a big eye-opening experience the past seven years, working closely with law enforcement, going on ride-alongs and seeing just how difficult the job is. So, I'm going to start with deep appreciation for the work and vocation of law enforcement. But with that being said, I, I do struggle with the notion that the largest post in this country should not be discussing officer-involved shootings. I think just given the process that happens when a person is shot by an officer, there's an investigation that happens because no one really knows what exactly happened, but the officer involved and the person who oftentimes is no longer here. So, to have that as a bar for discussion, I just find it to be unrealistic and actually contrary to why we're all gathered here today to figure out sort of what can we do to make it better. I know we had some conversations about shootings in other states, but I mean, just two months ago, there was a young man in Vallejo shot, Shawn Monterosa, 18-year-old young man right here in California. So, although we're leading the way, we still have issues to work on. And I appreciate Commissioner Barcelona's point and I would say, I, I think even without knowing the totality of circumstances, what we do know from data, what we do know from reports from agencies is that there's disproportionality at all levels of law enforcement, from who stopped to who's arrested to who's a victim of use of force and to whom shot. And oftentimes, that disproportionality falls on black people. So, I appreciate your anger, Reverend Moore, I don't think is illogical, I don't think it's not factual, I think it's human. And I appreciate you bringing that to this discussion. I would just say, I'm excited about the conversation we're having, that's one that's rooted in data. And the data is, we have to do more. We've done great work, but we have to do more to continue to make sure that our, our law enforcement standards and certifications and training and also accountability mechanisms reflect what we all value, this idea of equality under the law, this idea of equal human dignity, this idea that we all are American citizens, we all are afforded the same protection from the agency, we all pay taxes to support their lives and lab with it. So, so, so again, I'm Reverend Moore, I thank you for your comments and also appreciate the sentiments expressed by Commissioner Ramirez and Barcelona.
Thank you, Commissioner Tubbs. It hasn't escaped my notice and I don't think anybody else's, the topic is recruitment, morale and retention of law enforcement personnel. And the conversation's been taken in another direction. And the other direction is some of the terrible horrible things that law enforcement officers do, be it in this state or in another state. And I think that that is a discussion that we should be having. However, this, this particular agenda item deserves its own discussion. So, I'm going to ask folks, before we move on, to really focus on this question. Right now, we are losing, people are resigning in law enforcement in record numbers. We are having recruitment problems. You've heard from several people about the morale issues. Now, certainly, some of those things are going to get better as law enforcement gets better, but what do we say now to the sheriffs and the chiefs who aren't able to bring in those high-quality people because of the atmosphere happening in California right now? Forget about other states, California right now. What can we do to get more people, more high-quality people to apply for law enforcement jobs? What can we do to keep those high-quality people in law enforcement jobs? And what can we do to increase the morale? Because we all know, people make better decisions when they feel better about themselves. And right now, some of California law enforcement officers aren't doing that. So, I'd like to limit the discussion, just for this agenda item, to that. Does anyone have any other comments about retention, recruitment and morale?
I, I'll take a step at it, how's that?
I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner Moore.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll take a stab at that and Commissioner Tubbs, I'm not angry, I just get really emotional because I, I care about lives and people. So, it's like always, how do we recruit and how do we retain young people and get more people interested in law enforcement? Is, and we have to change the dialogue, we have to change the perception and we have to stop being, since the protest that we had here in San Jose and, and some of the words that I spoke at that, our police have not been out, San Jose police have not been out in uniform, although I've seen them stopping the kids from protesting. And since then, we have had several large rallies and large marches with little or no kickback or no destruction of property. And so, it's some letting the kids express themselves and letting the people, letting the people talk freedom of expression. So, how do we then turn this into recruiting these kids? Is, is we have to show them, not only is it a career, but it's a chance for them to come in and help change policing to be the community policing that they want and that they're asking for. And so, they're asking for a police department that responds to critical situations, but do not respond to clinical situations. Aren't the guys sent out when there's a mental health crisis necessarily, but are the guys that, I've asked people, what's the difference most of the time between a fire department and a police department? When a fire happens, everybody's looking for the fire department to come save them, to come help them. But when we look at the police department, we don't look at them as a saving tool. We look at them as a punishing, a punishment tool. So, we have to change that perception that when we're coming, that we're coming to help. And so, we want to try to use as recruiting tool possibly is, come help us change policing so that we can be more helpful to your community, for we to be more part of your community. And some of that, I do believe statistics have shown is, as we become more diverse in our recruiting and our, more diversity departments have, the less problems they will have in those communities that they're policing. And that's some of the problem. There's not, oftentimes, there's not anybody that looks like them. And so, we're split down a bad line. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is we have to just look- So I, I guess what I'm saying is, is we have to look for more tools to do more, get more diversity within our departments. So that, that the departments are policed by communities that, uh, uh, look like them. I, I guess, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Brazil?
Yeah, I'm back. I'm going to go in reverse order on retention. And work that I do for the firm I work with, and we go into agencies that have retention problems and you survey anonymously, survey the employees. The number one issue in every single organization that we've been in is leadership. And they feel that they're not supported by leadership, therefore they leave. There's some best practices out there, but that's information that needs to come out, particularly shared with Cal chiefs, Cal sheriffs and our unions. That people leave because they don't feel valued within the organization, necessarily within their jurisdiction, but within the department that they're in. Morale is this nebulous thing. People say morale is bad, but when you sit and ask them, do you like the people we work with? They say yes. Do you like your supervisor? Yes. So what do you not like about your work? And it goes back to the leadership. So I think there's some opportunities to look at best practices in retention and identify agencies where people are not leaving and finding out what they do. And it's the little things like the, uh, the letter you sent out, Madam Chair. It's those little things that make a difference in agencies. So if you look at who's fleeing and then who's not leaving, you'll find out where those best practices are. On the recruitment side, um, we can be our own worst enemy on the recruitment side. You can't be a cop till you're 21. So we tell people in high school, come back when you're 21 and they, they go astray. Instead of recruiting and investing in them when they're in high school, when you look at it, I'm going to, I'm just going to pick up a company. Pepsi-Cola doesn't advertise to diehard Pepsi drinkers. They're trying to recruit people to buy Pepsi that have never tried Pepsi. So the best way, like Reverend Moore said, to get people into agencies is to identify early on, hey, we are a good department. San Jose is a good department. Pick an agency. We have a lot of good work we can do and recruit people who never thought about law enforcement because they didn't understand what we did. It kind of goes back to what Lila was talking about. Unfortunately, too many jurisdictions now are eliminating their school resource officers. When you look at SROs across the country that we've studied, you'll find out that there's the enforcers and then there's the role models and mentors. We need to do away with the enforcers, but there's many agencies that use SROs as role models and mentors. And that's the best recruitment tool we have is to convince these young kids that this is a good career. And again, we can look for best practices, put out best practices papers as posts and say, here's some examples of what to do and how we hire. And then create systems within each agency, again, best practices, to where you create flexible job classifications, to where you can fill a peace officer position with a civilian at 18. It's a flex class. You hire them right out of high school. You give them jobs, you encourage them to go to school, you give them jobs inside the organization. They pass your background because they didn't get in trouble when they were, you know, in the 18, 19, 20 year old range. You've got great committed people within those communities. So you're getting people within the school, within your local communities, particularly schools are at risk to, to become members of your own organization. These, these things have already occurred. They're out there, they're best practices. There's agencies in the state and agencies across the country have done it. So I'm a fan of not reinventing the wheel. I'm a fan of looking for best practices. One piece that we haven't done a good job at, and I'll be quiet, is tapping the private sector to look for samples of bringing in private sector recruiters, private sector folks to, how do you keep employees? How do you, how do you manage employees? Stop looking, we've been doing the same thing for 50 years and we're getting the same results. Let's do it differently. We have an opportunity now through, unfortunately through crisis, to really change how we do policing in this state. And it's a matter of how do we change everything? Not just, you know, defund this, but how do we change the whole system to make it a much more efficient business system? And I'll be quiet. And thank you for bringing it back to the, the item. Because I think there's a lot of opportunity recruitment or retention that, that will, will help us address some of those other bigger issues that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brazil. And Commissioner Moore, I heard you loud and clear say, one of the ways that we can recruit and recruit well is to let those that might be interested in law enforcement know it's, that that's their opportunity to make a change in a positive direction. And if we offer them that opportunity, that that will help our, increase our recruitment and will also help us diversify, which we know will make the community safer. So thank you. And Commissioner Brazil, that was just a terrific list of ideas. And I go back to the question of what can Post do to help us make some of those things happen? Because it, Post really isn't terribly involved in recruitment and retention and morale. We certainly heard Commissioner Ramirez talk about morale being boosted by what we can put on social media. And that's one really good way. But let's keep thinking, what can we as Post commissioners do to make things better in those three areas? Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Moore?
I would say one, Post could offer summer jobs for internship type jobs to bring in young seniors or, or young freshmen to, to let them see another side of law enforcement and what law enforcement do. And there's other ways to get them engaged, to, uh, to bring them in and, and, and really let them have that experience. And, and, and then as Commissioner Brazil reflected, is one of the things that I'm having a problem here in San Jose, as you said, removing the SRO officers from campuses, it, it, it makes it really hard when you have SRO officers at one campus doing home visits. And then you put the cop in a, in a peculiar situation, whereas if he sees something illegal at the house, then he has to take action. And so that makes a bad interaction with the relationship. Again, so again, it's, it's what, with what we put the police in position to do and not do where they don't come off as the bad guy and make them come out as, as, as the good guy. So again, I would just encourage Post to, um, find some internship opportunities to bring people in to Post on, on an internship level, both high school and, and freshman in college or, or even in law school, to bring the man and introduce them to Post, uh, so that maybe they could consider a career in law enforcement.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, yes.
Yes, I just wanted to, um, to provide some information on the state internship program. So we do have one intern right now at Post. The challenge with the state internship program to bring them on, they have to be in college and they also have to be brought into a position where they're studying. So for instance, um, you can bring somebody in who is studying computer science to work on an IT project or work on IT matters, but you can't bring a computer scientist in to work in the basic academy to assist with the development of training. So there are some limitations on who we can bring in as interns. But we do currently have one intern at Post. And we have several individuals who started as interns and now are full time state employees at Post. So I don't want to, I don't want to detract from, from the comments. I just wanted to let you know that there are some limitations.
Thank you. And in the DA's office, we do have an, an active internship program with active recruiting and seeking diversity. So I know that various law enforcement agencies locally and DA's offices are also doing that. But there are these state regulations that obviously we have to comport with. Any other comments on the subject? Okay, we're going to move on to the next one, which is mental health screening, psychological evaluation of peace officers. I don't know who put that on the agenda, but if they'd like to speak to it or if someone would just like to jump in, let me reiterate, mental health screening slash psychological evaluation of peace officers. As we know, before you become a peace officer, you have to go through some psychological evaluation. I, I suspect this was put up to discuss periodic psychological evaluations after someone has already made it into a field of law enforcement. Anybody want to explain that to me or to all of us? Yes, please. Commissioner Work?
Yeah, this was just based on a conversation I had with some other people is, as law enforcement, as you know, it's a very stressful job and we've been involved in critical incidents and stuff. And a lot of times their alertness goes up based on previous incidents. And the conversation was had and I thought it might be relevant for this agenda to maybe explore or even look where you have these PSD cases in law enforcement further down the road in their career. So is, would it, is it something worth looking into? Is there a need to do, uh, you know, mental health, mental wellness, so to speak? More mental wellness training? I know a lot of departments are going that way and are exploring that. But is there a, a need for, you know? I mean, this could go in a number of ways. Is there, you know, is there a need to, you know, why this chiefs and all of them like, is there a need to have like a sabbatical? They get away from it for a certain amount of time to refresh the, the psyche, so to speak. There's a lot of clinics and a lot of retreats and stuff people can go to. But unfortunately, you have a lot of type A personalities and we're, we're our own worst enemies when it comes to admitting that we may have some mental anguish, so to speak, when we deal with certain involvement. So I thought this would be a good item for the agenda.
I've been working on that issue and brought, and I know Post is working on it for a very long time. But in the last couple of years, I brought it to the attention of Mr. Alvarez and he's been remarkable in all the reading and conferences that he attended in order to better familiarize himself. So I think Post has already started that. Would you like to address what you've done in terms of law enforcement and mental health?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we started on this process about a year ago, nine months ago. And I think we spoke about this at the commission meeting in February. We're trying to hit it from all ends. As you know, we are trying to update our academy training to create a standalone learning domain for wellness with standardized curriculum to be deployed across the state. We've also obviously developed a couple of videos that I spoke about earlier in the day for training. We have talked about incorporating wellness into individual team building workshops so that agency heads or executives or executive staff from agencies can go offsite and develop wellness programs for their own department. There's a number of wellness grants that we've issued. We were able to successfully get the legislature in the last two sessions to include wellness into some of the grants. So the innovative grant program includes wellness and there are a number of presenters that, uh, that are presenting classroom based courses on wellness. We're now issuing and we have issued in the last week a number of grants in terms of distance learning for wellness. And then we are also embarking on just some collaborative efforts with, with different departments and agencies. For instance, in the last couple of weeks, we've been working with NAMI or participating with NAMI in some of the products that they are putting together for wellness of peace officers and other individuals. So we are trying. There's definitely a demand for it, so to speak. If you want to call it a demand, that's probably not the best word to use. But there is a need, we feel there's a need. We were a little behind in, in putting some of those programs together. But we did start about a year ago, nine months ago. And admittedly, we kind of hit a little bit of a wall in March with COVID. We had workshops established to develop the curriculum for the academies and that's all been put on hold since then. So those, so those are some of the things. I know I'm missing a bunch of others, but those are the main ones.
You know, Commissioner Work, whenever people start talking about de-escalation, the first thing that comes into my mind is precisely that. If a law enforcement officer has been traumatized multiple times and hasn't had an opportunity to get the kind of care that they need, mental health care, they're not going to become equipped to go to the next situation. And so in my mind, the best way to start dealing with de-escalation is systemic manner, would be to get them the help and the services they need. And I think Mr. Alvarez, you have more to say about that?
I do. I want to make one introduction, if I may. Drew Wyatt, Bureau Chief, just came up to, uh, to the microphone. He oversees the overall program management for wellness and his bureau is developing some of the programs. I'm sure he's going to add to some of the things I said and correct some of the things I said. So thank you, Drew, for coming up.
Thank you. My name is Drew Wyatt. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. Things that are, that our bureau is taking a look at, we're actually kind of trying to build this thing from the ground up as well. We're actually really hard, taking a hard look at, you know, how, we're actually putting together a guidebook, more or less a guideline from Post. And we're going to take a deep dive into how to basically organize or how to help agencies implement a wellness program for their agency and kind of take a hard look at different areas of wellness and different ways to actually assist agencies to implement it and kind of really lay out, you know, systematically on just several different ways, several different topics of wellness and how to implement it. Manny kind of covered it in regards to what we're doing. But, you know, we're going to, probably in October, we're going to probably put together a subject matter expert group in regards to just developing this guidebook. We feel like that's where we need to start. And then after that, we're, we're going to be really kind of expanding where we go with that. So we're definitely in the infancy stages on that, on this particular project, but it's definitely moving down the, down the path.
And if I may, Drew, if I may add, one of the things that I've been a big advocate for, and I know that Drew and some of the others are probably tired of hearing me bring it up, but you're all familiar with the team building workshops that we do across the state. We fund approximately 50 of those per year. And they're primarily structured to, again, take command level staff from an agency offsite, primarily to work on leadership issues, organizational change issues, whatever it may be, with a facilitator, a certified facilitator to lead those discussions within that small group of individuals. I've, I'm a big proponent of creating some of those programs specifically to address wellness and nothing else. They would go offsite and start developing programs for their own department with somebody who's trained in that topic area and is trained as a facilitator to lead those discussions. So they would have some deliverables to bring back to their agencies. So we've had a number of conversations with agencies about wellness. And one, I believe it's Richmond, I could be wrong, but I think it's Richmond PD has a program for their officers on diet. So that officers aren't going to the fast food place, you know, in their patrol cars to get food. They have a mechanism where there's a local company that puts together good quality, you know, organic farm to fork type food that they can order and they just drive through, pick it up at the station and they get a nice healthy diet. That's something that that department did for their staff. And I'm, I'm sorry if I'm mentioning the wrong department, but programs to develop ideas like that, that they can bring back to, uh, to their department, I think are impactful, are easy for us to do because we already have a platform to do it. We just have to create our guidelines and make sure that our facilitators know how to guide the group in those directions. Thank you, Drew.
Hey, anything else on that subject? Thank you for bringing it up, Commissioner Work, something near and dear to my heart. The next one is early intervention programs. Could someone tell me who put that on the agenda and what their thoughts were? Mr. Alvarez, can you tell me?
Okay, sure. So early intervention programs are primarily software tools that agencies use to track certain activities within a department. Also were used as, I want to say smoke detectors or red flags on use of force incidents, excessive force, IAs, traffic collisions, you know, complaints, whatever you want to call them. It's a certain software applications that are out there that a lot of law enforcement agencies are now using to track these types of events. Some of, sometimes they're mandated by consent decrees and other, another authorities. And sometimes they're used voluntarily. And I think somebody had asked that we put that on for discussion. So we put it on.
Maybe you want to comment on that? Either commissioners or staff? Mr. Alvarez, did you want to comment further on that?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on to policy uniformity. Mr. Alvarez, can you tell me about that?
Okay, that was another request, I think primarily based on different policies, obviously what the, what the term says, that the policies are disparate policies or different policies. different policies, obviously what the, what the term says, that the policies are disparate policies or different policies across county lines, within a county in terms of use of force, traffic collisions, traffic stops, car stops, whatever you want to call them. I believe one of the commissioners wanted to talk about uniformity of those policies. I can also just say from a Post perspective, generally speaking, we do not engage in policy discussions. There, those are done individually by agencies and we're for the most part out of it as Post. There are a couple of recent legislative bills that made, made their way through that asked us to put together models, so to speak, for policies. And that was in terms of hate crimes in 2018, I believe, legislation to pass 2018. So we did create hate crimes policy, hate crimes model policy. And now we're being asked to do the same thing for Senate Bill 230 for use of force. And those are the, the use of force guidelines or for the policy development that we've been asked to put together, or we've been directed to put together by the end of the year. But generally speaking, we are out of the policy discussion altogether. That's left to individual agencies. I, I've also kind of gone through the different states to see how they, how they work as Posts with their law enforcement agencies in that state. And I couldn't find one Post across the state, across the country that was responsible or had any play in putting together policy.
Any further comments on that? Yes. Commissioner Rourke?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I'm not, I don't know if I brought it up or not. I, I don't know if the idea behind this was maybe kind of a best practice policy. I mean, as we learned when we were working on 392 and stuff, use of force policies varied throughout agencies and stuff in some degree. But I don't know if there's a way to do like a best policy. I don't know, more of a guideline or something where there's not as many differences. Where, you know, one could expect somewhat of the same policies throughout every agency. I know everyone, different missions of different agencies have different tasks and stuff that they deal with and stuff like that. But I don't know if there's a way to do a best practice policies on hot topics, so to speak.
Sounds great to me. Manny, any thoughts about that? Or is it something that Post could consider and get back to us on?
Sure, we could try for October.
Sounds good.
Down in one fashion or another. Yeah, I think the biggest discussion when it comes to policy, the stuff that we've been hearing is really, you know, we've had a lot of discussions recently about crowd control and, and mutual aid and the complexities with that, when there is a mutual aid call out and different departments responding from different jurisdictions with different policies. That is a very, very tough nut to crack as we've, as we've discussed with the governor's task force personnel and the governor's office. Is, as we know, in, in February, we were hoping to have the chief from San Diego PD come and speak and some, he got pulled away. But San Diego County was working on a standardized use of force policy for all agencies to to fall under within that county, since they support each other in different capacities. They've had challenges from what I've, my understanding, it's still not complete. My hat's off to them for trying to do it. But it is a, it is a very, very difficult thing to do. We can address the best practices at the October commission. I can't assure you that we will have a finalized product, but we can at least put it on the agenda.
Just some thoughts would be terrific. I, I brought up issue number seven. I'm sorry, Commissioner Rourke, please.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, if you have to have the best practice and everything, but maybe topics that we might want to look into would probably be a little less intensive at this point. But again, if we start looking at the now, rather than the legislature come up and telling us what needs to happen, we can take a proactive approach and maybe have some topics there.
Thank you. Anything else on that? Okay, I brought up issue number seven on the, I asked issue number seven to put on agenda. It goes back to a meeting we had a couple of years ago where Commissioner Moore talked about this. He talked about the idea that our Post meetings, like similar to a comment you made earlier today, Commissioner Moore, about everything's so secretive. And really, isn't there a way the Post should be making its way into the communities? So the communities have access to the commissioners and to the information and the, what's going on at Post. And we talked about maybe going to different places and some of us speaking at different places about Post. And I think now more than ever, we see how important it is to have positive community relationships. So I put it on the agenda to see if there was still an interest in that. And if so, if anybody had any ideas about how they'd best like to do that. I think Commissioner Ramirez made a comment a couple of hours ago about what can we do together, community and law enforcement? And how can we fertilize that and make, and expand that? So thoughts about how Posts could come into communities and what form that would take and if that's a good idea? Comments about that? I know everybody's getting tired, but only two more. Commissioner Moore?
I guess one is, is a commission meeting is, is one step is we've invited people and people don't sometime come out, but and maybe at one point, maybe even try and a listening tour where we actually just go out and, and listen to people. And, and some people come, we want to know how we can help our police departments do a better job. Not saying a better job, but can work better with the communities. And again, we have to get away from this separation and start talking about partnership. Start talking about relationship with community and, and, and not entity in the community. And so I, I really want to stress, let's, let's have a conversation or listening tour where we go out and we invite the communities to come out. And, and, and a lot of times, the first few times we go out, we're going to, we're going to get slammed, you know? People are going to bring all their stuff, but, but we need to come out and listen to them. And, and then make some determinations how we can best work with them to, to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Manny, I'm not sure if we're now overbooking October, but is there some way that Post or Post commissioners or Post employees can make it into the communities and start with the listening? And what form would that take? If you could ask, you and your staff could discuss that possibility and report back to us. Thank you. I know that, again, in Santa Barbara County, we've, we've done quite a bit of that. And you're right. You know, the first couple of meetings were four and a half hours of me just listening and I've yet to speak because I think I'm still in the listening mode. Listening is terribly important. Appreciate it. What else? Okay. Additional or alternative control holds? Can you tell me you put that on the agenda, what the thinking was? Manny? Batine?
I think that might have been, was that mine, Manny, about our replacement for getting rid of the carotid? What we're going to do, I suggested like extending the academy to teach more like jiu-jitsu type. I think we've kind of coined it at work, jiu-jitsu, to get them to a higher level of being able to tackle through you think by themselves and, and get people in holes that they can control until they get a backup.
Commissioner Ramirez, I, I believe when you requested that be discussed, it was for the October commission that we were going to provide a presentation. This was a request to actually have an open dialogue before we present it in October. I believe we still have, our goal is to present material based on what you, you had mentioned at the June meeting in October. So there's more for us to get some feedback at this point.
I can tell you that there was still some confusion out in the field. Last time we voted that Posts would no longer teach the carotid restraint in the academy or in Post sponsored classes. The confusion that I heard about was that somehow the carotid restraint had now become illegal. And that somehow people could be criminally prosecuted for doing that. Posts never said that. Posts only talked about the train, training people in using the carotid restraint in both the academy as well as classes after that. So I think it's important that people clarify those two differences. Manny?
Yep, Madam Chair, if I may add, you are correct. However, there is a bill moving through the, through the Capitol right now that will, that will make it illegal to use the carotid restraint control hold. So it won't just, if it goes through, it won't just be teaching it, it will actually be employing it, using it.
It's important though, for the community to understand that that is not what Posts did at that meeting. Post's role was only talking about the education of it, but that may in fact be what the legislature does.
Correct.
A question from O'Rourke?
I had a comment. I believe the intent on that bill is that it's still going to be justified in self-defense for your life for someone else. Until the verbiage comes out, I believe there's going to be a, I think that's the idea also.
Thank you. Okay, as this was the last item on the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent items? I'm not even sure what that means. Toby, what does it mean to approve the consent items if we just had discussion?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's actually necessary since this was just
Okay, I agree.
A chance for everybody to, to talk.
See, sometimes two lawyers do agree.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, now Finance Committee, unfortunately, the commission will not review any items from the Finance Committee this special session. However, Commissioner Long, do you have any comments you'd like to make about the Finance Committee?
Thanks, Lila. No, I don't at this time. Thank you.
Okay. The commission will not hear any committee reports at this special session. There is no old business for discussion at the special session. There's no new business that I'm aware of for discussion at the special session unless anybody has some new business.
Madam Chair, I have, I'm sorry.
Please.
I'll wait for the commissioners.
Was there a commissioner that had new business? Please, Commissioner Moore?
I, I, I didn't really have any new business, but on, on behalf of me of the community, civil rights groups. If you don't mind, if I just name a few of them, the Center for the Study of Hate and Equality, California League of Latino American Citizens, Disabled, the ARC, United Civil Policy, California Council of Churches, Japanese American Anti-Defamation League, the Council of Churches, as well as the California State Hawaii NAACP, we want to, we commend Posts and its efforts on the hate crime policy. And how you've put it up on the page now. Manny, we want to really thank you. They told me to send their whole heartfelt thanks for the work that you've done on that bill. And, and there is some more that they'll be coming back to us with to, to work on. And I just wanted to let you know that all those civil rights groups that, that I'm working with sometime and I'm talking with want to commend Posts for the changes that you've made and thank you for it. And to everybody else, just want to let everybody else know that me personally, whenever I hear of a cop or a police officer being shot, I wonder what happened and I'm first concern is about his family. And so I want to make sure that that's understood. And so the excitement or the energy you hear in my voice is how do we make this a better place for everyone? Is ultimate goal, I believe Posts should be striving for, so that everyone is safe and everyone has a good time or, or good experience when we come in contact with each other. Understanding that it's going to come times where a force might be needed or will be needed. But too often for my community, when I speak, I speak it too many times across, just not my state. And I do, Commissioner Barcelona, talk about my police departments in particular. And, and to just let you know, at San Jose, when I walked away from the community advisory board, it was because I told Chief Garcia, you're getting, you're going back from community policing and you're getting more physical with our community. See, all this lines up with after the current person in the White House had said some words. And we, our attempts, our issues of force all went up. And I just related to the fact that it's all been in the news here for me when the unarmed Latino sister was shot on Christmas Day. While her car was hooked up on a fence. Or it may when they went by for a noise complaint at a hotel and ended up beating to a couple over a noise complaint at a hotel. I said, we're not trying to solve things by trying to bring peace. The community is afraid of you and that's not a healthy relationship. You have to have respect for your organization and who your people are and your community. And when your community and our department loses respect for one another, we then have confrontation. So we have to get back to a place where the community and the officers understand that we interact together and that we respect and we need each other. And when we get back to that place, we could begin to have a, a much better relationship. And thank you for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore, as always. Any other comments or anything else into new business? Yes, Commissioner, Mr. Alvarez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under new business and old business, if I may. Under new business, we were proposing a new start time for the commission meetings and a new schedule. And we wanted to throw it out to see what the commission thought. And this is a proposal from staff. So as we all know, the commission meetings have been starting at 9:30 AM on Thursdays. And the day before, we start the meetings with a finance committee meeting at one o'clock, followed by an advisory committee at two. So finance and advisory Wednesday afternoon, commission meeting on Thursday morning. We seem to always be rushed for the commission meeting. This, this meeting has gone on now for almost two and a half, three hours. And there haven't been any voting items. And as you know, a lot of times we have votes and debate and such or deliberations. So what we proposed is to start the meetings on a Wednesday morning with the finance and the advisory committee with a lunch break. And then the commission meeting starting on a Wednesday at one o'clock, going through five. And then coming back on Thursday morning, wrapping up on Thursday morning. So that would entail for commissioners, they would have the option of flying in or traveling in on Wednesday morning when we can travel. Or coming in the day before. And then leaving on Thursday afternoon. It would just perhaps give us a little bit more time and not feel as rushed. I think it will potentially put some folks, I don't want to say put them out, but it will require a little bit more travel. Especially for some of the commissioners that are in the San Francisco Bay area, if we do it in, in Sacramento. Because it would require an overnight when I know a lot of them travel in and then travel home without having to do an overnight. So that is something we were throwing out so that we could have a little bit more discussion. For some, it won't have an effect on multiple additional nights of, of travel. But that is an option that we would like to throw out. And the other thing for new business, I should have mentioned just during my opening statements. I mean, I think there are some, some commissioners that were very complimentary of some of the things that Posts has done. And I'd like to say I didn't do any of them. So I think I do that at most commission meetings. It's really the staff that does them. I really, I take credit for none of this stuff. But thank you for the, for the comments and just thank you to the staff that, that were able to put all this stuff together and move things along for Post.
Thank you. So to be clear about what it is you're proposing, you're saying that the Post meeting, which the main commission meeting, which has typically been on Thursday and typically gone from 9:30 until we're very rushed at the end. You're suggesting that that start at 1:00 PM on Wednesday. We finish as much business as we can. We move it into Thursday and we go as long as we can need to on Thursday without feeling rushed at the end. So the commissioners that were just coming in on Thursday would now be asked to come in on Wednesday. The commissioners that had already been coming in on Tuesday evening or Wednesday morning to watch the other committees, there wouldn't be a change to their schedule.
Correct. I think we would be able to wrap things up very easily by noon, if not 11, 10 o'clock on Thursday morning. Perhaps even finish it on Wednesday, but the goal would be to take it into Thursday. So there would be no rush. People would be able to fly back home and be home by five is
Would you, but sometimes we will go into the afternoon on Thursday, based upon our experiences, depending upon what the issues are. So are you asking the commissioners to now give you their thoughts about that or? Or you mentioned it, I'm not sure what you had in mind?
Yeah, it's, it's your commission meeting, so it's whatever you all decide. There's a follow-up with future commission dates. So I don't think we necessarily, we may not necessarily need to have an answer at this point. But it is something that I think we would have to resolve by February, if you would like to do that. If you don't, then it's fine. We can keep it the way it is.
So I'm assuming pessimistically that we will once again have a Zoom meeting in October. Forever hoping that's not true, but it appears that it is, that is going to happen. Were you suggesting for the October meeting that we start on the Wednesday? Or, and again, it is our meeting, but I'm just trying to make sure, so when I'm discussing with the commissioners, what it is you're suggesting for the October meeting? A, are you now, do you now want to say that should be a Zoom meeting or suggest it should be? And do you now want to say it should start on Wednesday or Thursday or suggest that it should be?
Follow-up question that I was going to ask is what do we do for October? Because we have hotel accommodations, blocks of rooms, a significant block of rooms at the Grand Sheraton in Sacramento for the original schedule, not the modified new schedule. So if you decide you want to have the meeting in person, then I would say no, we wouldn't. Even if you want to change the schedule, we should do that in February. If you decide you would prefer to do it via Zoom, then I would say that we can do it in October if you would like.
Okay, so commissioners, in order to keep the distance, we would, I don't know what we would do. If the commissioners do decide they want to meet in person, is there a facility that could safely accommodate everybody for October? Assuming that the requirements are the same as they are now? Mr. Alvarez?
Sorry, I was deep in thought.
I, oh, okay.
May I ask?
My husband used to say loading, yes.
Yes. Loading. Nate, may I ask that you ask the question again? I'm sorry.
The question is, I haven't asked the commissioners yet if they want to meet in person. If they do, I'm just wondering if you have a facility that could accommodate social distancing for the next commission meeting?
It would be in this room that some of us are in right now that accommodates, you know, approximately 100 people. If we did it in person, would be tight. It definitely would be a challenge. I mean, the table setup is what we have here. And then obviously, I think it would be a challenge. And we could do it. We could obviously invite, if it's still under the emergency order, the state of emergency, we are allowed by Bagley Keane to simply allow members of the public to call in like we have been. So they wouldn't be invited into this room and we could spread it out, obviously, and just have the commissioners here. That would potentially be fine.
Okay, commissioners' comments? Do you want to say October meeting will be Zoom or in person? Which one?
Commissioner Berg?
Commissioner Berg.
So I would, I don't know, make a motion or recommend, I don't know where, what point we're at right now, to go ahead and make that Zoom just to ensure that there is social distancing and, because I just don't think we're going to be out of this crisis by October. And I certainly don't want to do anything to lend into any possible exposures or anything. So that would be my recommendation and my preference.
Anybody else want to comment on that?
I'm with her. I think that's the best.
That Commissioner Barcelona?
Yeah, I agree as well. I've just pulled up the numbers while we were talking. We have, we're up 273 deaths in California since yesterday on, totaling 12,407. So we're well over 100 dead every day with COVID. And I think, you know, getting, getting into a room with a lot of people is a dangerous thing. And I certainly don't want to be exposed or have anyone exposed to it till after the first of the year at least.
Okay, does anybody disagree? Does anybody want to have an in-person meeting in October? Okay, seeing no hands raised, I don't think we need to discuss this issue any further. We will plan a Zoom meeting. I will be here because it's important for me to be able to see you and see the staff in order to run the meeting. So in terms of the upcoming, is there anything else in terms of new or old business? Mr. Alvarez?
No, ma'am, just when you get to correspondence.
Yeah, I'll get to that. Anybody else want to make any comments about new or old business? Did I see a hand? I do. I see Mr. Long's hand.
And I think Eve as well. I just wanted to comment that I think, Manny, I think that's a good suggestion going forward when we're not doing Zoom. I think that would make sense because I also think, going back a bit, Jeff talked about it and Lila talked about it a little bit. Trying to put a little, you know, almost marketing and putting a good face on things. In the discussion today that I tried to keep an ear on, on decertification in the Judiciary Committee, there must have been 20, 25 people commenting over the phone about the role of post and what post should be doing or shouldn't be doing. These were, none of them were law enforcement, and I don't think the understanding of what post does is very deep. I think we should go a step towards that by inviting community groups, one maybe to each, to each meeting, to reach out to folks, to put a face on, and to put a face on what post does. And I think that, Manny, your suggestion regarding the Wednesday start time would, would help with that. I, my experience is that outside law enforcement, people are really, it's a mystery what post does. And to hear what people said today in 7:30, about 7:31 about what post does, nothing was negative. But it was just almost a complete lack of understanding of what post really does. And I think it would be helpful for post to actively solicit community involvement in each meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Berg?
So now that we've decided to do this meeting in October for Zoom, do you wish to start it on that Wednesday? Or is this not the time to talk about that? Or do you want to wait until the February meeting? I'm just, I mean, if we're at it and we're changing everything, we might as well look at that.
I think now's the time to talk about it and then we can figure that out. Do you have some thoughts or feelings about that, Commissioner Berg?
No, I like the idea of having it, you know, in the afternoon, the day before, at least, starting it so that nobody's rushed to leave early, especially if we're discussing a significant item. But yeah, I would prefer to have it at 1:00 p.m.
And already several commissioners, Commissioner Moore and I and often separately other commissioners, come on Wednesday and listen to the morning, and then we have the afternoon break. And that would be, in my mind, wasted time that we could be spending meeting, discussing these pertinent issues. So I'm also supportive of it. Anybody disagree about that shift? Okay, for those of commissioners that are still with us, it appears that people agree that we should perhaps try that. Manny, would you like to comment about whether you want to start that in October or wait until February?
Yeah, yeah, it really, for us, that does not matter. I think Commissioner Long suggested that we wait till February for the schedule while we're in person. Because if we start it on, on Thursday morning at 9:30 like we always have, generally, we're rushed for flights. Everybody's got to rush to get a flight. And if we're going to do it on Zoom, we won't be rushed on that Thursday anyway for, for travel. And then perhaps once we start meeting in person, hopefully in February in Pasadena, then we go to the modified schedule.
Okay, and I like that idea because several commissions aren't on, aren't here anymore. They've gotten offline and I'd like them to also give you some feedback on that change. Anything else? Old business, new business? Okay, the following, and now onto correspondence. The following was sent to and from post, to post from Richard R. Weeby, attorney requesting suggestions to the development of the use of force guidelines, from Greg DeGier, civil rights advocate regarding the hate crimes model policy guide, from John Incontrol, chief of San Marino, San Marino Police Department regarding the carotid control hold restraint decertification order, from post to Richard R. Weeby, attorney addressing the suggestion to the development of the use of force guidelines, and to Greg DeGier, civil rights advocate addressing the hate crimes model and policy. Future dates, we've now agreed October 21 and 22 will be a Zoom meeting where participants will be here in West Sacramento. We're hoping February 24 through 25th will be in Pasadena, June 2nd through 3rd in West Sacramento, and October 20th through 21st, again, in West Sacramento. In terms of closed session, we will not be holding closed session during this meeting. Commissioners, is there anything else at all? Hearing nothing, I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
Or?
Smith, second.
Thank you. Ms. Nunez, please do a roll call. Let me explain to you why we're doing roll calls. Toby explained it to me during the break. When we're having Zoom meetings, we can't say aye as a group or nay. We have to have roll calls for every decision we make. Thus, I will once again be asking Ms. Nunez to please take a roll call vote as to whether this meeting should be adjourned. Thank you. Barcelona?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brazil?
Yes.
Uyghur?
Yes.
Donilon?
Yes.
Doyle? Dudley? Yul?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Madrono? Moore? Commissioner Moore?
Yes, yes. Is it not working? Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hubs?
Yes.
And Vasquez. Thank you, commissioners. A very important meeting and some critical conversations. We've just begun them, but the enthusiasm is contagious. And thank you to post staff for hosting this meeting. Again, awkward in every aspect of Zoom and people in person, but I think we're still doing great work. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.